I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. and Mrs. President, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone who might be on Zoom. Just a reminder, if you have any comments, please raise your hand, and I will follow you. If you are on Zoom and you would like to make a comment, please make it in the chat. Yep, and please give your first and last name, and he will follow you at the appropriate time. So, roll call. Here is I can.
Here.
To the U.S.
Here.
Kelly. Here. Joe Petraskey.
Here.
Caroline Squire.
Here.
All my group. Here. All right. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we have a new business, 5.4. I would add the nomination of Melissa Burgess to the White, uh, Colaga, in myself.
Recording in progress.
How's that? I think that's better, I think, between the volume on. Yeah, okay. I just want to make it so. Uh, so we need to add 5.4 to nominate Melissa Burgess for White's position as a superintendent.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winter School Committee meeting of October 20th, 2021, as written or with corrections. So move, Sergeant. Move in secondary discussion. All of you favor? We'll pass it to the committee. Superintendent report.
Uh, submitted our report. I want to just get a quick look at it. I think I have a lot to share tonight, but I think it's almost all going to be under two items later in the agenda. Yeah, actually, I did put it in place here, but I just wanted to, I know a lot of specifics to share with you, but I did attend, um, on Wednesday, last week, I attended the Maine School Superintendent Association meeting, virtually, and on Thursday and Friday, I attended the Maine School Association. I did send you guys an email a little bit late to say, I wish you could have heard the speaker that spoke on Thursday, he just, I mean, on Wednesday, the superintendents, and then spoke as the opener for the School Board Association. He was amazing. He was exactly what we needed. I was so inspired, I bought all three of his books. Um, I just got yesterday, started to read them yet, but his name is George Coors. C-O-U-R-O-S. Um, did I put it? No, I didn't know. I wrote this. Uh, but he's amazing. Get a chance. I'm hoping that the, um, in school management, I know they record the whole, uh, three days, and I hope they can make it available, which should have done for you guys just to listen to at your leisure. Uh, he's very, very positive. One thing I want to say, uh, I put in my emails to the staff, and I shared with, this is Randall last week. Um, I think it just really made me think a lot about our staff here, and how hard everybody's working during this pandemic. Uh, but he made an incredible distinction between a classroom teacher and a school teacher. And basically, when he, department of the classroom teacher is somebody who would be told, you know, maybe a great teacher, uh, really focuses on their class, gets to know the kids in their class, but outside of the classroom, their classroom, they may not, they see something, so I ask, not my business, not my problem. Uh, and a school teacher is somebody who's, who's on 24/7. And, um, that's, we're so blessed to have a full-running majority, if not a half percent of our staff, that I would call school teachers. They really, uh, do, they go above and beyond, they see something going on, they address it, they bitch in wherever, whenever. Um, and that's not just a pitch over, we're talking about later on, it's, it really is, it really was great listening to him and just moving that distinction, uh, to, uh, to reflect on our staff and everything that they're doing, uh, to make things work for our students. Um, I have a couple of other things that, that were not in my report. Um, I did look today, one of the great, the good things of being in, uh, on a Thursday night is the numbers from the CDC comes out on Thursday. Uh, this week, the, uh, it's not racist, but last week was the highest number of positive cases, uh, since July, since they started tracking, so, uh, well, it'd be that, uh, it was 22, this week it's 16. It's not great, but it's, uh, not 22. Uh, and the other thing is, I'm sure you all know, if you don't, I just want to make it a matter of minutes that the election did happen, and we, uh, we do have a new, a spoken member elected, her name is Catherine Emery, and we have a meeting scheduled for there next week. Uh, she will be coming in, hopefully do that.
I, I knew, I wrote some times, but I, I didn't hear back as to.
I'm not sure. I looked up, but we have it. Um, so we will be doing the orientation together, and she will be coming in, talking to the town office. Uh, she will be coming in to spawn in, um, and then we will leave with her. And then, as we talk to our last meeting, I'll invite her to come to the meeting, she, she considers the audience, and then, um, certainly weigh in, get everybody else in. Um, we will officially take over Janet, I'm sorry, in January.
We have to film celebrations last weekend.
Yes.
You what?
We're going to talk to her, don't take it all, film it, like.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess Janet's still going to do that.
Yeah. Janet, great job.
Thank you.
Is there a question or comment? Genie just wanted to point out the numbers that Jim is reporting can be a little bit deceiving as there are some home plus positive cases that may not actually be reported.
This is, this is not student cases, I'm going to say this to Genie, it's not student cases. This is the CDC reporting for the, for the Winter Community, the number of cases that are, are, uh, are reported to the CDC. So, and it's consistent, they've been doing, you know, like I said, I started tracking this the second week of July, and up until we started in school, there was never a week that it was more than six or seven. And then we started school, and it sort of immediately jumped to 15s, and then 21, and last week was 22, and this week it's 16. So, it's not necessarily students. But obviously, there's a dark connection between that, but, um, yeah, that's a good point. Um, so we have one resignation, Caroline Rideout, a middle school English language arts teacher. We're in the process of, of filling that position now. And unless you have questions, that's all I have. Like I said, I have a lot more to share under the, uh, other parts of the agenda.
Hi. Uh, so for my report, I just wanted to put it on your radar that we'll be talking about the superintendent with him in December, so I'll be in touch with you all about that. Uh, committee reports, finance?
Yep. We just finished a couple of warrants, and I will email these to you, Jim. Uh, we did 10 and 11 payroll, 6B, 8, 8A, 9, 9A, and 9B, and we are all caught up.
Great.
It was slaving away when I came back.
And they looked really big, but we had to remind ourselves that they now include the food, which they didn't in the past.
Right. Yeah, they were pretty thick.
Yeah.
What do you mean by now include?
They used to be separate warrants, like general spending and nutrition spending, and now they're all together in the same warrant, but they are, um, written out to different account numbers.
Is, is that portion reversion by the state?
Um, I don't know.
Uh, yes, but with the, I don't know where you're going with that question, but there are a number of things that they do that could be reversed. You know, the food nutrition program definitely is, that's one piece. But there are other pieces, the warrant is very broad. So there are other parts of the warrant that are reversed.
I just talked about the nutrition thing.
Oh, yeah, right now.
Because I thought we were understanding the state was picking it up.
Oh. So these are things for, like, when, uh, when Erin purchases the food, so when she purchases it from the local members, then she has to pay for it.
So this is on the expenditure side, not through revenue side?
Also, Joe?
Except that I was thinking that if there was a pre-game luncheon for Saturday, if you need a schoolboy ready for a 10:00, 10:00.
I will, I will let.
It looked good, honestly.
I will let Melissa know, because she is organizing all of that so well.
Nice celebration. I mean, well, obviously, you set them up.
Yes. Um, for policy committee, we met on the 20th of October, and we are going to be putting forth a policy tonight for September 8. Negotiations?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, uh, we do have, I haven't even told you the schedule. Uh, Teresa and Marcia and I met yesterday, we got the, what's it called, letter for information, or?
Back to back.
Stuff that they request, you know, preparation for, uh, negotiations, and we may, we may, uh, meet, try to meet as organizationally anyway before Christmas, pretty.
Great. Anything for curriculum?
No.
What? No administrative reports tonight, so we can move on to old business, and revisit, return to school. Call. Is this one of the ones that you have a lot you want to talk about?
Yeah, I do. Um, Kelly just shared this, shared this with me, but I have something I want to share with you guys. And when we met with the Kennebec Valley Superintendent today, we, uh, this was, this link was sent to us, like, I have this article that this people want to all of you. And, but I, we don't, you don't read through the whole thing, but.
We have, I just wanted to share this.
Um, that basically, the, it has gone through all of the stuff at the federal level it needs to, uh, and now the state, and I don't know which office, you may, you know, Kelly, whatever, whoever does it here has 30 days to essentially let us know how to implement this. And so we should have 30 days maximum, so before, by the time December 4th, they'd say we should have some guidelines around, uh, the implementation of Biden's vaccination rules. Um, so you can look at that.
It is, uh.
That's January 4th.
It is January 4th.
Well, that's President Biden's deadline, but that's not 30 days from today.
Yeah.
See, I assumed it takes you 30 days to get vaccinated, and giving you 30 days.
Oh, you know what? I think they're two different things. I think the, um, whatever we have to put in place, I think has to be there by January 4th. How we put that in place, that protocol, has to be done by, by December 4th.
Gotcha.
5th.
5th, correct, yes, yep. So, uh, yeah. Uh, so that's one part of that. I don't know how much detail you want to go into in any of this, so I'll just put some stuff out there, and you guys can take over the conversation. Um, the, we have a November 12th vaccination clinic set up here at the grade school. Uh, that will, that information has gone out to parents. Oh, you have that as well? Oh, no, you don't, never mind. Um, but it's November 12th, we'll be getting more information out. Is there a plan to get information out, Jolene?
Is there what?
Plan to get information out about the November 12th vaccine.
So it went out today in the alert?
The hard copy goes home tomorrow.
Okay.
It's super easy to just leave online, and I, dirty apples.
Awesome, awesome. So that's happening. Um, the, uh, I guess the thing that we need to spend a little bit of time on around this issue is, uh, Jolene and, or primarily Jolene, but some of her, some of all the nurses and some of the people who are helping the nurses have really taken a great deal of flack, um, because we're doing what we're, you know, um, require, fuel required to do, working very closely with the outbreak groups from the CDC. Um, and there's been some very tricky situations, and I know that they're hard to sort of, I, I kind of have to be talked through, walk through this law, so I get why there's some confusion and some anger in the community, because, um, the, the big thing is, uh, that if it's a community outbreak or a community, whatever, I don't hate to use the word outbreak, it feels like it has multiple meanings.
Community spread, maybe.
Community spread, thank you. Um, then the safeguards that we put in place doesn't protect kids from quarantine. I feel particularly bad, I had a really awesome conversation today with a mom who was, um, just really upset, but, but not angry, just, just, just certainly, just understands circumstances. I gave her the number for the CDC outbreak people to call and said, please call them, because I'm not going to be able to explain it as, as well as I probably should. Um, but essentially, without giving a lot of information, we've had three different community spread situations, and her child has been caught up in all three of them, so tend to shoot field from the era. So basically, her child has had to quarantine three times, even though that child is in pool testing. So it's, you know, I get it, uh, it's, it's very aggravating. The hard part is, I think, for some people, just to hear these sort of individual stories, it feels like things aren't working, but I really think, and I feel very confident, same to you guys, it is working. Uh, we had four teachers who had to quarantine, who had to quarantine, and most of their classes had to, but they all had numbers of students in their class that were in pool testing that didn't, because those were school issues, not community issues. And the big difference is this, and I'm just telling you what, don't, don't shoot the messenger because I'm not sure I even necessarily agree with this, I do understand it, so, uh, the difference is this, and the, the big issue was, it was a, a spread, a community spread at Kids Club, which happens in our building. And so the parents are asking me, and I got a really good email, great question, said, if it's in your building, why does it have to be, why can't kids that are pool testing continue to stay in school? And the answer is pretty simple. Uh, you know, I'm just going to tell you the answer. Um, that, we don't have any control over Kids Club, and so at Kids Club, kids are not masked, they're not distanced, they're, they, they basically share, um, stuff that's going on. I think they try to have some, you know, they probably don't try to, do you work with Kids Club?
Um, I don't, I, I was, I hope that I'm getting a job there actually, but I can't because of drama. But I'm planning on working there too, but I have two friends who work there.
But I know, I know there are a lot, and Lonnie will be the first to tell you, they do, you know, they are, they are, they don't pay attention to distancing, their nod is, um, but, but basic bottom line is, we don't have any control over it. The other, the other outbreaks, uh, others spread in the community, um, there was one with Girl Scouts, we had nothing to do with that, and there was one at a daycare, we had nothing to do with that. So when kids, when there are kids that are, that get caught up in that net, uh, that, that, that's what happens. What I, what I, what I want people to understand is that the rules around what the CDC does has changed 180 degrees from last year. But the spread that we've had this year, we didn't, uh, the grade school would be closed, would have been closed at least twice, if not more than that. Um, I don't think the high school or the middle school had been closed, I don't think they reached outbreak status, even though it was a big spread and one incident, um, fairly recently at the high school. But the grade school has had multiple ones. Um, and when we do contact tracing, you can trace it back to, um, particularly with the teachers, and this is no fault, it's just circumstance, uh, they did not get it here at school. It came from essentially three or four different, uh, places, which exceeds the outbreak status. Uh, so that's why we got involved with outbreak status, and, and why we deal with the, uh, the CDC. I've had at least a half a dozen phone calls with Samantha, who's the, the, um, person who does it there, the chief, or who does her, she's very complimentary of, of, um, the school and the school staff, the nurses and the principals, and everybody, you know, doing their job, teachers, and, you know, it's like, there's, there's not much more we can do. Um, my fear, so I'll be, you know, Sue can jump in first off, but the, um, I think the, the question I asked today, um, and it wasn't of, uh, I didn't get hold of Samantha, but I just said, you know, do we have, can we make the decision, can you make the decision as a school committee to say we're not going to follow certain pieces of this? For instance, you might say, if a kid's in pool testing, even if it's a community spread, they can stay at school. Can you decide to do that? Yes, you can. Should you do that? No, you shouldn't. Uh, I think you, I, I think when you look at the, the, the big picture in my mind, the pool testing process, what needs to happen is more and more kids need to get involved in it. Um, and we'll have more and more kids that are, you know, are going to be able to quarantine. We already had, I don't know how many kids are quarantined right now, but it would be triple if that, if we, if we weren't doing pool tests. Um, so.
Question about that.
Yeah.
So if that was an option to not have to quarantine if it's a community spread, wouldn't that encourage more people to be involved in pool testing?
Um, I don't, that's a, that's, that's a guess. I don't, I mean, I don't know, that's not a guess, I don't mean that. I don't know. I have no way to answer that.
I, I'm a little concerned with what you're saying about, uh, the Kids Club not masking, if they're using our physical building. Shouldn't anyone who's using the physical plant be masked if they're inside?
Well, that's not what we had decided initially, we can, I mean, we can make that, and I know Lonnie, Lonnie, you guys all know Lonnie, there would be no issues with saying, if you want to use our buildings, you have to follow our rules, uh, with respect to these masking, so, um, but, you know, it's, I think particularly as we're getting towards winter, and we have a lot of kids that are using it, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. My guess would be, and this, this is why I want to talk to Samantha, and I will, I'm sure I'll talk to her tomorrow. If we did that, if, if, I don't, I don't think we could do anything to, to mitigate or change things like Girl Scouts or outbreaks at take cares, but if they're in our buildings and they're following our rules, and they are, they are socially distancing and all that type of stuff, then yeah, our rules should probably apply.
And I wouldn't want to do something that would cause that program to stop.
Yeah.
Right? Because that's not good for family members, but it just seems like you're originally saying to all of these same students for hours of the day, you must mask if you're in the building, and then after a certain magic hour, you can stop, it's okay. Because COVID's gone now, school's open.
Yeah. Well, that's never been our message, we just, we never extended it that far.
The emphasis for that too, is I'm not, I'm just saying, statement, not like, after-school activities, the week must.
I think if you're outside, it's probably not as good.
Other, playing, yeah.
But that's still, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I knew that before when we were, when we were having conversations about winter sports, which is coming up later. Uh, but that whole sense of, I'm standing on the sidelines doing the down markets for the football team, and then those guys are all out there, and they're piling on top of each other, and they're, you know, whatever, and they're, they're, whatever, sweating and spitting all over each other, hopefully not intentionally. Uh, and, and, um, you know, that's permissible, what, what's the answer? Say, what, what's the difference? Well, the difference is, they're outside.
Yeah.
And, and the CDC says that's not, um, that's not a problem. So, um, remember that when we would start talking about the conversation about winter sports.
We're, we're having, and it's not, I'm not saying it's issues with the, with the after-school thing, but this just came up at our school today too, because our, we had the same type of program put on by the Boys and Girls Club, and they went outside, and they use our playground equipment, and they follow no school rules, and there was a tech that was out there, because we had a bus issue, and we had bus kids out there too, and she's like, do I not yell at these kids for being up on top of the equipment or going up the slide the wrong way? Because at school, those are our rules, and our principal said, it's not our program, it's not our rules, they have their own rules.
But I will say, that's, that's a great example, but, but I think the, um, we, this type of thing is happening in other schools, until today, talking to the Kennebec Valley Superintendent, um, and Pat Hopkins from Gardner Maticola sticks out, because she was very adamant about this, exactly what you just said. Um, they were not letting some of the programs, um, happen in new school because they were not willing to follow the rules, say, fine, you don't want to follow our rules, you don't play, you don't use our facilities. And, you know, of course, community members would say, well, they're not your facilities, they belong to the community. That's not, that's, that is true, but it's not, they don't control it, we control it. So I, I think it's a, it's a very fair thing to say, um, that they, and I will have, I have the conversation with Lonnie, that's, you know, that's, um, that's not a hard thing to do. And this hasn't come up, this hasn't been an issue, so it's, it's why it's, uh, it hasn't been addressed before. Julie?
So just a question, if you have that conversation with Lonnie, it still is not going to change the outcome of a community spread, is that correct? I'm not sure.
Whoever's not having quarantine.
Well, just based on my conversation today, it may, it may. If, if they're being in Kids Club and doing this, using the same precautions and distancing and masking and stuff that we use during the day, then I think it would. Uh, the issue is going to be this, and I think, surprised Genie hasn't asked a question, or Melissa, the issue is going to be about, um, if somebody, if somebody tests positive, who's going to do the contact tracing? Because our people, right now, we do it. So Kids Club doesn't, they either have to accept that responsibility too, or they have to really ensure that those kids stay, um, distanced, masked, and, you know, whatever they, and we talked about, uh, I was talking to Melissa, we're talking about, uh, the need to sanitize, and I know they're doing that.
How, how are they doing that now? So, so part of this family that's had the three times?
They're not doing that, that's what I'm saying, they're not being, they're not paying attention to distancing.
No, 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 I mean, who's do, who's informing them that they have to quarantine?
We are. When we do our close con, uh, close contact, we.
But if it's happening in, in the community, how are we finding out?
Okay, that's, actually, that's a great question. Initially, this came because we had two, two pools test positive, and one of the students that was in, that was tested, that was in a positive pool, was identified as a close contact, and then doing the contact tracing, uh, trace it back to Kids Club. So, the hard part, and I, I get this, and I, I don't know how to send this message out, I feel really bad, and, um, you know, I, I think Jolene has taken more than, and Melissa, and some of our volunteers have taken a lot of flack from people who don't like the fact that we're, we're following the rules, we're not making them up, we're not, whatever, we just, we're following what we've been told, and, and I just think it's really unfortunate that people that are doing their jobs are taking a lot of crap for things that, uh, you know, just for doing their job, doesn't seem, you know.
I, I do think that if, if we are going to have that conversation, that, that they should get the benefit part and not have to quarantine. To me, that's, if you, if you have to do the, the hard part, you should get the benefit of it too, like the kids in school are.
But I do think we have to pay atten, and, and again, so ultimately, the question comes down to, for you guys, I know what it feels like for, for Jim Ochkin. Um, this is, we're still very much in the beginning of the end, beginning of a pandemic that is probably going to go away for, um, a significant period of time. And if somebody's asking me how much I'm willing to, what liability I'm willing to accept personally, because I sort of jokingly said that, I was talking to a friend of my dad's this past weekend, and I, and he said something about, why should we have to mask? It's America, we should be able to choose our own, you know, and I said, really? I said, let me ask you a question, are you willing to accept the responsibility for some kid if they get sick and something really bad happens to them? Are you, are you willing to accept all that responsibility? And they're like, no! So why do you expect me to? Why do you expect the school committee to? Why do you expect the administrators to? It's just, it's, you know, and, and I think it made a difference, and, and I'm not personally willing to say, um, I think when we put some protocols in place, and remember, we're not stopping, everything we've been doing doesn't stop COVID, it slows down the spread, you know, the, when five- to 11-year-olds can be vaccinated, that'll slow it down, it's not going to end, and as we talked, we talked earlier, um, it's never, we're never going to get rid of corona virus, it's never going away, just like the flu, uh, never went away, and we will, we will eventually still have thousands of people die from the flu. We'll still eventually have people, thousands of people die every year from, from coronavirus. But there's a difference between that and 2 million-plus people in just over two years, and set over three-quarters of a million people here in the United States. That's not, it's, we're not slowing down. Um, we're actually, I think you said this earlier, it feels a little bit like we're ramping up. You know, what's hard in terms of predictability, some of you may remember sitting here in August when we were having this discussion at opening school, and Dr. Jen was here, and she said, you know, right now, the variant, what we're seeing, variant as it's traveling across, or traveling to our areas, that it moves through quickly, it's more aggressive, um, and we can see that because we have lots and lots of people who have been vaccinated, who, who contracted. Um, they don't, their symptoms aren't as bad because they, they are vaccinated, so that's helpful. Um, but we don't know how quickly. That's why I keep track of the, uh, the number of cases on a weekly basis. Uh, I can tell you that the delta variant, and that's why I wanted the conversation, uh, about what we need to do now that we're, you know, almost three months into the school year. Um, it's not slowing down, and, and we're not able to, to get even a little bit closer to normal. So, we're not trying to end it, we're trying to control it.
Trying to fight it.
We're trying to fight it, yeah, that's, yeah.
I think it's hard, right? Because a part of me really wants to say, well, why don't we give it a month or two months of saying, if you're in a pool, you can continue to stay at school, but then, what if you do that and something does happen? So, yeah, you can go back and you can say, all right, we tried it, it didn't work, but then you still have that, that kid or those kids that potentially got sick because we. So, yeah, you can go back and you can say, all right, we tried it, it didn't work. But then you still have that, that kid or those kids that potentially got sick because we made a choice. I don't know.
So, the opposite, so this guy did ask me when I was talking, he says, well, what about the kids? But he also said something that I shared with you guys earlier, but this blew me away because I'd not heard this. He said, if you ask these kids to wear masks and they, they have medical issues wearing the mask. I said, well, to be honest with you, I haven't seen a lot of these. He says, but you ought to see what they put into those masks. I was like, I, I don't even know what you mean by that. It's not like they, I don't know. I have no idea what he means by that. The masks basically, and some people make their own, whatever. So, I don't think the masks in and of themselves have anything that's, you know, really, really bad. But I said, you know what? If you're, if you're asking me, he said, what happens if you have a kid with a mask, has a reaction to wearing the mask and, you know, and you have a medical issue with that? I said, you know what? I, I can, I can live with that risk. You know, if it's an either or, I can live with that risk. Because I think we're following all of the best medical advice we're being given. And it's something, and I already, we already say this, if kids, let us know now that they can't wear a mask for medical reasons, we make adjustments for them. We let them wear face shields or we let them, you know, we give them different breaks, whatever the kid, we, we do that. So, yeah, I mean, it, it, to me, it can't be either or. It's got to be kind of both. And if I have to choose, if I have to, am I forced to, and I am because of my position, where I fall on this, I'm going to support the risk that's inherited from asking some people to do, all take all of, you know, the best precautions, keeping people as safe as possible. And to me, this is not, this is not a political debate. I get really frustrated when people say, this is America, we should have the right to choose. So, no, this is, this is America. But this is about how to deal with the, the health crisis. So, anybody's rights to, to do whatever stop at the point where it impedes other people's ability to be safe and, and healthy.
I was just going to say, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think this is ever going away. And I'm going to ask the same question I ask at every meeting. Where is that threshold at the bottom where we all agree it's never going away? Now, what do we do? Because I don't think anybody can live like this forever.
No.
I want a second. Exactly. That was what I meant to.
Yeah.
So, so, and you may remember me saying this, and I kind of made light of it, but in the fact that that kind of question comes up all the time. I, I was, I think I shared with you that Dr. Shaw had done a, a meeting with the superintendents, and that one of my colleagues had said, when will this be over? Well, maybe because of the way he said it, it didn't come out. That's a whole different thing. And his answer was spot on. Even in light of, you know, that it keeps getting asked, it wasn't what I thought. It was like, at the time, I thought it was a crazy question, but it's a great question because they were asked the same thing. What would be the threshold? How would we, how will we know we can mask less or this, you know, whatever? When can we start the process of returning to more level of normalcy? And he said, the main CDC won't make that decision. The federal CDC will make that decision. And what he, but what he says is actually a little scary. They don't even know what metrics they'll use to decide that at this point. They just, they're not at the point where they're thinking, they're thinking about, they're still on, on the frontline battle as opposed to the, how do you plan for that type of thing? So, I don't think anybody has the answer to, what does it look like when we can say, we don't need to sit in this board meeting, wear a mask, you know, as maybe as a beginning. We can be, you know, whatever.
I don't know how many of you saw Dr. Shaw's presentation this week, yesterday, Tuesday? One of those questions was kind of asked, specifically, one of the reporters asked, when can kids who are vaccinated stop their masks in school? And Commissioner Mayhew was pretty, you know, blunt by saying, we're not at a place where we can even think about that yet. We're still in phase one. We need to finish phase two before we can even think about what a phase three. And I think that's where we are now too, is not these phases. But, I mean, we could say what we think the metric is going to be, but since everything is a moving plate right now, it's not static at all. I don't know that that's a smart thing to do because then people will hold you to it. Well, on November 4th, you said that on this day, we would stop masking. And why are we not?
And if you remember back, that same meeting in, in August, Amelia Arnold, who's, who's on Zoom, by the way, has done some great things to try to do whatever we need to, to make this happen. She ran the clinic that we had, the Booster Clinic last week. She said, I remember very specifically, her saying, I love what you guys are saying, but it's like going from zero to 100, you know, and we're, you're not ready to do that. We've got, we've got a long ways to go. The, the ideal that you're talking about, I don't know how to simply be there. You know, I don't know. It's, I, I'll be honest with you. It's really, from a selfish standpoint, it's very frustrating for me to think about. I have a very limited amount of time that I plan to continue to work. And I just said this to my wife last night, who's retiring this year. It's like, oh my God, I hope it doesn't have to be like this with my last, next number of years that I'm, you know, planning to work. This would be, it's, it's not good. It's not good. And the other thing that I think is important, if we're all in the same places, is, and I hear from the teachers a lot, and I hear from the administrators all the time, it's, we don't do this because we want to. We do this because we have to. So, it has some implications. I think we're going to start the conversation tonight and different parts of this agenda, only next. But ultimately, it's, you know, we have to sort of figure out. We are, we are hoping, and I said this a lot, we started this year hoping that the Delta would kind of sweep in, pound us really hard, and then start to wane. It hasn't happened. We're here in November. It hasn't happened. So, I don't think we can hope that it'll get better. So, I think we have to plan for what I would call worst case scenarios we move forward for the rest of this year. And then, it won't be long before we start to put together our, start to put together the calendar for 22, 23. I don't know what that's going to look like. And, but that can, I can tell you, there's a very good chance that will be dramatically impacted by how long Delta hangs around and what comes next. Because we don't know that.
I had a, I had a question back on this article that you gave us.
Yep.
And it talked about, the rule does not require employers to pay for or provide testing to workers who decline the vaccine.
Correct.
So, that's not what we would do.
So, let's, that's why, I think those are part of the rules we're talking about. They have 30 days to sort of come up with what, how you should implement this. And I think we have until January 4th to implement it. I think at that point, if, I'm just going to put my two cents worth. I'm not making a decision for the school committee at all. But if, if they basically tell us that it has to be, you know, the simplest way possible, people are either vaccinated or agreed to weekly testing, whether they join a pool or they go some other way. That will be the rule, and hopefully that will be what you will adopt. And if you adopt that and people refuse to do that, then we're going to have to be looking at some sort of insubordination and what goes with that.
And the other thing is it says.
Oh, can I, I'm sorry, one other thing you said in there. So, I agree with them. I don't think, I, I think we're going to make, we, we actually talked to the administrative team already, and I don't know, they may change their minds and regulations do. But we don't want people to go out and get their own testing. So, we will provide the testing here. We'd prefer they join a pool, which is, we're trying to protect their anonymity. So, we want them to join a pool here. Most of your staff is in a pool, right, Jolene, at this point?
It's quite a few.
Yep. But we don't, so, so we're not going to say you can go get it somewhere else. We're going, we want to try and control that narrative. So, we will provide it here. We provide it here where it pays for it.
The other, the other thing that it said was, unvaccinated workers must also wear face coverings while on the job.
So, that may be, if that's, so, that's maybe a step to the question that you asked, what if, so, maybe they determine as part of this, this rulemaking that vaccinated employees who are maybe part of pool testing don't have to be masked. And they will make the decision, which hopefully you will choose to support, that if you choose to be unvaccinated, even if you're in pool testing, that you would have to wear masks and vaccinated people don't. I'm not crazy about that. I don't, I hope they don't go in that direction.
Makes it awfully hard.
It sure does.
People police it. We don't, you're not vaccinated, so I can do nothing as well.
Yep.
I also think that's, it's, this isn't for schools, and we have to do it for schools too. We don't really have a choice. This is just guidelines for people who have over 100 employees.
So, only part of this applies to us?
Well, maybe like, I remember part of what I got myself in some trouble asking people to reach out to Representative Nissen, but I, I need some clarification because there was a distinction between CDC guidelines and what the DOE had adopted around testing back in after seven days to, to shorten it. I think this has been, my expectation is this will be the same thing. They will, they will do, the CDC or whoever comes up with the guidelines in 30 days will come up with them. And then the DOE will adopt some or all of, and that came from, from the deputy commissioner today, that he, he said it better than I just said it, but that's.
I understand what you're saying though. So, okay, so, it's hurry up and wait right now. Yeah, for 30 days of just sit on your hands kind of thing. Before we move on, I do have, because I've contacted by a few parents who were confused by some of your messaging about being in contact with the quarantine team and that there were outbreaks, but they weren't considered outbreaks, and we weren't going to have to close the school, that they were outbreaks. But they were, they were confused and concerned and upset.
So, and I tried to clarify that the second night. My first message, because we were, we were, we were, I didn't know what we were sitting on. We had a pretty big spread. And it's tough to, you're going to make sure that they, you know, use the right, I use the right terminology. But I had sent out the, the message that said, they wanted to know, remember, there was a gentleman who spoke at our last meeting about informing the public so they could decide what they want to do. It was never my intent, although I was happy to accept this, that they said, if you don't want to be in school, well, don't. And that's the way some people took it. And I'd said at the end of that message that it was just to let, to keep them informed. And that I would let them, let them know. So, the next night I sent another one that said, it was, it was not an outbreak. It was one, one situation. And that we were expecting students to be back in school the next day. So, I guess, I mean, they might have missed the message. They, I, I don't know what the clarity is there. Do you have a question out there?
I'm, I'm here as a parent of students at the middle school. I'm just, I don't want to take it off.
No, you don't have to take it off. I just came here.
Oh, sorry. So, I have students at the middle school and the high school, and I'm one of those parents who was obviously concerned about that message. And it's not that I didn't get all the messages. It's that there were contradicting messages in the messages. So, your first message came and said, there are outbreaks and it is in these schools. So, do what you want to keep your kids safe. This is the message I got. You know, we're going to contact the CDC, but, but go ahead and make your decision. And then I feel like the next day, it was kind of like throwing shade or shame at the parents who kept their kids home because it was like, hey, we had 75% in school. So, we expect to see you all tomorrow. But there was no kind of, sorry, I'm a bit shaky. There was no kind of, there was nothing put in the minds of parents at ease. And the more parents and the more family members I spoke to who got these messages or, you know, that, you know, they're extended members of my family said, sure, yeah, you should keep them, keep them home. And I, my first concern is I don't understand how, like, when this concern first comes up, where you aren't sure of the spread and how many kids are affected, why aren't we going remote, remote for a day or two immediately? Why isn't that the first plan of action? I don't know this, I'm not like yelling about it. I know there's probably a million reasons why, but like, if we can remote when we know that there's cases in school, why didn't we remote this time? Why was it left to parents to say, keep them home if you feel like it, but we expect them to be in school? So, now I have students who missed a week of school, and because they're middle school and high school, they're way behind on their work. They're stressing every evening trying to catch up. They missed out on all the special school activities because of Halloween. And had there been some kind of, you know, release of information to kind of, you know, to kind of put parents at ease saying, hey, even without specifics, if you were to say like, we found the spread, you know, the students affected are, you know, everyone's being handled and, you know, we can assure you that it's pretty safe to be back in school with a mask and all that. But there was like, there was none of that. It was just kind of like, we've got cases, we're calling the CDC. Hey, we didn't hear back from the CDC or they said it's not an outbreak, so send your kids anyway. Like, but you have most of your middle school who can't vaccinate. You have breakthrough cases for kids who are vaccinated. And I'm not saying we should all live in fear because of that, but it is the reality. And even with pool set, pool testing, there can be false negatives, there can be false positives. It's a really good system, but it's not a foolproof system. And I don't understand why we're not falling back to like, let's go remote to keep our kids safe, especially since there's so many that are unvaccinated or can't vaccinate, or even when they can vaccinate in two weeks, they've still got, you know, infants and toddlers and family members at home who can't or, you know, compromised. Like, I just think it could all be like, a little bit safer. Like, it's great, like, I have my kids in school. I, I feel like it's pretty safe, but I feel like there's just a couple more things where like, if there's close contact and they're in pool testing and they don't come up positive right away, that child or that teacher should still quarantine for two weeks. You have no idea whether that test was a false negative or a false positive, or if they're asymptomatic or any of those things. I just think that I'm way not concerned about when can we get back to normal. I'll mask my kids for the rest of their school careers if I think it's going to save them from COVID or their deathbed. And I just think that I wish there was more of a, a more of a push towards parents who are highly concerned rather than a push to, let's do our best to keep all the kids in school. Because if we're pushing to keep all the kids in school all the time, then that's not the safest bet. It's, especially that Tuesday. That Tuesday, after that message that came out, what happened? We had, we had the schools lose power. So, that wonderful filtration system that's been like so helpful in keeping the schools, schools safe, it wasn't working. So, now you have schools full of students sitting in stagnant air, masked or no mask, you know, there's, there's no filtration, there's no air movement. There's a plan getting put together to early release. But again, that's still hours worth of time that those students were sitting in a stagnant classroom. And I guess that's kind of the end of my rant. That's.
That's great. That's great. I appreciate that. As a first thing I need to respond to is that the outbreak, the CDC outbreak group that has, you know, has been in touch with us a lot this year, the very first thing they say is, don't close down for a day at a time. It just, it doesn't, they're, they're very concerned. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but the reality is if people are not in school, we have a lot of our parents, especially here in Waltham, that are very responsible. And if school's not in place, they make sure they are at home or doing anything. They're not out. But we, we know from past experience in the CDC, you can say from the entire state level, that if, if we just, one day away is not going to make a difference. That it, it actually has the potential of making it worse because of the, of people being together. The same way we were talking, I don't know if you were here earlier, we talked about community spread, that if they, we have, if we have that type of day, where we're just taking the day off, that, you know, they would get together and be with their buddies and do whatever. You know, I don't know that that's going to happen. But, but the CDC and the DOE have been very clear since the beginning of the year that they, they do not want to close schools. They believe the safest place for our kids are in school. So, that's, you know, that's really where that's coming from. The second part, I, you know, I, I, I think, whenever I send out a message, I try to get other people to, to look at it and to word method whatever, and I can't find my very first one. But the second one, it just says, Superintendent Hodgkin, Jim Hodgkin calls to follow up my message last night. I spoke at length with the CDC and others regarding our positive cases of COVID here in Waltham. It has been determined that this is not an outbreak, but that all the cases are connected. We continue to believe that our schools are the best place for our students to be. We'll expect them to return tomorrow. That was because I get some sense that people were saying that, that people felt like they were, said, keep your kids home. And that we were responding, I was responding to a gentleman who was on Zoom last time saying, you could just tell us the information, then we can, as parents, we can decide what we want to do. I said, okay, well, we're not really sure what we want to do with this, but we want people to know what's going on. So, sent that out to, to tell them what it was like the night before. So, I, I think both, everything you said are great points and things that we think about all the time. And, you know, we, we try to send out, you know, I, I go through, look through my, all my blogs and stuff because there's been so many and God knows how many of the schools have sent. So, I appreciate your points. I, I think they're, they're really valid. I understand that, you know, why people are feeling that way. We do, I will continue to do the best I can to try and put out relevant, clear information for our parents so they, you know, can, can know what's going on. And I love what you said, by the way, before I forget, you know, there's, it, it seems to be a real recognition that there's, there's so much more to this that we, you know, we can't share. It's, you know, it's.
Right. No, no. Yeah, obviously. But I, I, I just like a couple of my, real quick, I'll be, I'll be short. Is there any?
Can I just ask your name?
Oh, I'm Jacqueline Clarkson. I'm the parent of Phineas and Fiona Keller at the middle school and the high school. Is there, I know that there are a couple of teachers who have implemented a, you know, they'll, they'll do, they'll, they'll livestream their classes for students who are either quarantining or affected by COVID so that they don't miss out. Is there any way we can give that option to kids who maybe can't vaccinate yet? And when there is a scare like this, you know, I don't feel comfortable sending my unvaccinated child to school, whether the outbreak is considered to be sports or school, because either way, the kids who are in sports are in school. So, is there any way we can have? So is there any way we can have any kind of remote program that like would maybe, in cases like this, kids who aren't in school can join and then not be, you know, days or weeks behind by the time they're back to school? Again, I understand that probably takes like time, effort and planning, because I'm sure you don't have a, you know, gaggle of teachers off to the side just waiting to get onto a Zoom meeting. But is there any way we could get more teachers to participate in allowing their classes to be livestreamed for children who are out or quarantining? And I forget what my other point was. If else please stop on that.
I don't know how to respond at best, we just may, we have limited resources, as I know you know. So we may try to think of the money that we had available to us from COVID funds that we had and made a decision as administrative team about how best to do that. And so this year we have not provided a remote option. So we're, and again, it's sort of the thing I said earlier about, we had no idea how long this heightened thing was going to last, and so that, hopefully it'll stay, but there's going to be a conversation about kind of what to do next. Because the, the thing that has probably been most challenging for the, for our teachers this year is, this year is actually significantly hotter for them than last year. So we're trying to look at some ways to sort of do that, so. I don't have a great answer, I don't think, I don't think we'll have the resources to go to some sort of remote option. And, um, we, you know, I think that's really the, the key question is how do we find other ways? You know, I think the, all the schools and the administrators and teachers have been basically creative in trying to, you know, get work out that's both relevant and timely to try to keep. And the reason we made the investments we did is to try and identify kids who were falling behind last year and help get them brought up. I have to be honest with you, that hasn't really happened all that much, because particularly at the grade school, the, the people who were kind of hired to, to do that work have primarily been filling in for classroom teachers who were, you know, and Jolene has been doing, everybody's been doing a great job just trying to, you know, keep the classrooms staffed. And so the people that are there to do sort of this extra stuff, they haven't really had a chance to, so.
I mean, I'm just, I'm probably going to, I think everyone, everyone was pretty much here, I think the students were great, I think the feedback they gave the students were great. I never had a problem contacting any of my student teachers, we're staying on top of their work, everyone communicated very, very well. And not to say that in-person learning, that doesn't happen, but you know, it being our first, you know, run with remote learning, I just think it went really, really well. And the teachers were really great and, um, I, I just, I, you know, my kids did well, I can't speak for everyone's kids, I'm sure a lot of kids didn't enjoy it. But I just, it was engaging, they got their work done, they got good grades, and that's, that's really the, that's the goal of every student for every school year, you know? And so, yeah, I was really looking forward to this school year, hoping that there would be some kind of remote option, at least for students who couldn't vaccinate yet. And it's kind of like, it's kind of disappointing that there isn't, that there isn't something available, you know?
Sure, good. So what you're kind of talking about, we, we use the word synchronous and asynchronous. So synchronous is when they're teaching the students in class and live streaming at the same time. The issue is, that's really difficult for a classroom teacher to be able to pay any attention to the kids who are remote and have questions. And also respond to the students who are in the classrooms. And I think that that was something that we had to take and really balance this year, was how can we make sure that teachers are effectively teaching all of their students if we're offering this remote session, but we're not offering, we can't offer a resource to help manage the remote questions and students?
Right.
And I think that's, that was a hard decision for us, for sure. But I think a lot of people underestimate how difficult it is for the teacher to, to do that in a classroom, so.
Thank you for coming, appreciate your input.
Sure. Also, for you on that, yeah, on the statement that you just read, that you had sent out, the confusion was where you said it's not an outbreak, but we've been able to link that all of these cases are connected. For most people, that's an outbreak. And so they were really confused by you saying it's not an outbreak, but they're all connected all along, and you know how many all is.
Yeah.
But not every parent or anybody who's getting that knows what that number of all looks like.
Well, there's two, two things to that, thank you for reading that, just in terms of clarification, is, and this is, things, we said a long time ago, the rules change all the time, and this is the perfect example. If you look at the CDC guidelines, the outbreak definition is three or more unrelated cases. Well, we surpassed, surpassed that in the first week. And, um, I, I don't want to sort of go back and look at these, but we had a major spread, the right word, last year in a community involved way more than we've ever had. And it was, it was from a particular place. And it doesn't matter how many people are connected to, to that spread, it's, that's one incident. And so in this situation, it, we could trace it back and we knew all the people, the teacher here at the grade, at the grade school, five coaches, you know, whatever, and all, all the people, the kids that were connected to that all came from one, one incident. So, um, the, just so you know, and then our following is, we, so we, we, I ended up talking to the CDC on that one and I, there was some question about whether we will be closed down as a result of it, and they're like, no, that's one. But they also were really clear to say, even when you reach outbreak status, all outbreak status does honestly is put you in connection with those guys who they, they closely, they more closely monitor you. Every positive case that we have with any of our students or our staff has to report to the CDC. So the irony was, we had that first outbreak status meeting. It was probably three weeks after, at least three weeks after we had officially reached outbreak status, which meant we had more than three separate, you know, outbreaks, so. And then when, following this situation, that was that one pretty big one that prompted that email and that blast, we had, within a week of that, we had three more teachers test positives, then they were all separate, they were not connected. So realistically, that was four, out, four separate. Insta, spreads, which would have been a, could have constituted, would have constituted a closure. That's what I keep trying to say to people while, you know, they're hearing all this stuff, it's like, but the way we're doing things now, we're trying so hard. And, and so this again will be part of maybe the next transition to the next part of this agenda. The, the hardest thing, and I said this, this that beginning of the year, I had no idea what it was going to be like, because the hardest part is what happens when you have, you know, fifteen kids in your class, four of them are quarantining, eleven of them are sitting in front of you. That's the most challenging thing. And that's what our teachers, particularly the grade school teachers have been dealing with every single day. And I shouldn't just say that, the middle school, when I met with them, they had pretty much the same situation, they have bigger classes, so. You know, you might have a, a class that has a bunch of kids that are, that are quarantining, and so you got a class of twenty, and you've got fifteen sitting in front of you and five sitting at home, it's, it's, it's incredibly intense, so. Thank you, I mean, that's, that's what it means in terms of, it's about, I mean, I know what I meant. You know, I wasn't trying to mislead or misguided anybody, but that would have been, that was all new terminology for me. And that whole, that whole thing flipped in a year, in less than a year, to go from would have told you you had to close down to really making you, really wanting you to stay open.
And I, I just wanted to add, just in a personal note, I have a daughter in high school. And I asked her if she wanted to stay home that day, and she said, Mom, I really need to be in class, I really want to go. That's where I want to be, that's where I learn the best, so the kids do want to be there, at least most of them, I think. They have, they have their choice to be in the classroom.
Yeah, I guess we're almost in here about not going to school. They were very excited, especially after remote learning, it's one of the only places they can socialize. We've quarantined hard since this happened, we have family at risk who lives nearby, I care take for a ninety-eight-year-old woman. You know, there's no way that we can risk a spread, and it seems to me like when we're so close to the end, we're so close to getting that next group vaccinated, I'm not willing to take any extra risk whatsoever. If my kids are mad at me for the week and they want to throw a fit because I thought it was safer to keep them all from school, then that's where they're going to be if I think it's the safest place for them to be. They want it to be in school, it's just, it's, to me, and from the information I had, it just didn't seem safe, especially with one that can't, can't vaccinate yet. And how upset, how upsetting would it be to know that, you know, somehow she got COVID right before she could vaccinate? And it ended up being a really bad case and she's scarred for life because of it, I couldn't live with myself as a parent. And I hope a lot of parents feel that way and are erring on the side of caution rather than the side of, let's get back to normal. Because that should be the furthest thing from any school-aged parent's mind right now.
Yes, Jeff?
This is a little bit odd, but you talked about air quality problems. When was that?
I talked just about when the power was out.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't think that the schools have air quality problems right now. My concern was when the children were in the school, when the air system, air purifier system obviously wasn't running because there was a power outage. And I understand a power outage isn't something that you planned for, but I guess it was just like an extra, you know, insult to injury that it came right after the day that, hey, we have a, we have a spread, but we're not sure what's going on. And the very next day you have seventy-five percent of classrooms filled to the max with students who aren't getting any filtered air because it's, it's out and out, an outage.
Not going to worry for this, but I know at various times I've talked about the need to have backup generators in all our schools. I don't want to make a list of what we might be borrowing some money for, but I still think that's a perfect example of having something that's there to turn on specific areas, okay, which in this case for us is the ventilation is extremely important while we're dealing with the COVID situation. I just, I want to, I understand what you're saying, thanks.
So, um, were we going to, I think we had kind of started a talk about the teachers and I know we're.
Well, it's on the agenda.
What, heck?
Yeah, it says under, oh, it's not. I'm sorry, it's not.
Do you mean it to be five point two?
Uh, no.
No.
You're right, it was supposed to be under the, under the desk. So I, I, just in terms of following protocol, I think you guys need, you've, you've received a copy of the server results from the WEA. You've received a copy of a letter from the teacher, building rep. I know a very well-respected teacher here in our system and, um, it just seems to me that it makes sense that you have a conversation. I have, I have some additional data to share with you related to that topic. And I do not expect, to be really clear about this, that you make any decision tonight, because I try to be really stick to our protocol, which is if you're going to make a vote, it should be on the agenda so the public can see it in case they want to show up to, to weigh in. But I, I think the, it does come back to what, you know, what we've been talking about, which is, I think this year has been far more challenging than we anticipated. And I think at this point we, we know, and you've heard very consistently that, you know, the teachers are feeling stretched to the max. And like last year they had, we, we didn't do Wednesdays last year, we, the DOE pushed us hard, we pushed ourselves hard. Our teachers want our kids in school five days a week. But right now with any, with, with all the additional expectations, there's been zero time that's specifically dedicated to allow them to plan and to deal with situations like we're talking about where you have three or four kids that are out. And that makes you not sound like a lot, but that's in addition to what you have to do during the day. So it's, it's, uh, it's not unique to Waltham, there's a lot of, you know, it's happening in other places. So I took a look nearby, just a real quick snapshot of what's happening in some of our other area schools. And, and some of these maybe haven't made a lot of changes at this point, but they're looking to. But I think it's very interesting in terms of some consideration. What I'm hoping is that you guys can have a conversation, maybe come to a recommendation, which we can put on our next agenda as a, as a vote. So what I want to say is, go back to where we started, I think we made a great faith effort from my perspective to start the year and be in five days a week, not add any additional time to the calendar. You've heard me talk a number of times about the notion of a, of a three-legged stool of success. A three-legged, an image of a three-legged stool with students, parents or community and teachers as the three legs of, of success. And the need for us to support all of those legs. And I think last year, our community was very supportive in, supporting what we wanted to do, which was that, we started off with just the first quarter of Wednesdays with, with no school, no students in school and having it be remote every Wednesday. And then that, that we extended that throughout the whole year. I think you heard multiple reports from, from the staff through the, about the course of the year about both how well they appreciated that and how supportive they felt that was of them. So in terms of that three-legged stool of support, four days a week, eighty percent of our students wasn't the perfect scenario for our community. There were a lot of people that had to make a lot of sacrifices in terms of their jobs and blah, 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 but they did. I would say an overwhelming majority of the people did it and were very supportive and understanding of that. Hoping that it wouldn't stay like that for, it was support, I think it was very supportive of our students because we had eighty percent of our students in person, eighty percent of the time. We didn't mix our cohorts, we didn't have half, you know, like a lot of other places where they had, they would have, like students would go every other day, so they were only going four days, I mean, in person, two days out of, out of five. Our kids were going four days out of five. So I know when Josh was here last year and Amelie was here last year, they talked a lot about how the students really appreciated it. They worked, particularly the high school kids worked really hard to make sure that they didn't, you know, that they made it work. So everybody did a great job, was very supportive of everybody. This year we, we went to a five-day-a-week model, which is what was sort of encouraged by the DOE and the CDC. Like I said, teachers, I think they really wanted to, and I, and I think our hope was that the first month or two might be challenging and then the, the COVID would, would subside at least somewhat. We can make it a little bit more manageable, but it hasn't happened. So I think now that we're sitting here on November fourth and, and things are not looking like they're going to get better anytime soon, you've already made one decision, and that's to have the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving break be remote. It gives us a nine-day break from people in our schools, hopefully that with our, you know, because it is a family break that, that there'll be, people tend to be with their families and less with the, sort of hanging out, socializing with their buddies and whatever. But that might be, you know, a, a good break. And then I think it's just a short period of time after that between these, when we come back, it's pretty much be separate until the, the winter break. So I, I think we have to think, I think I'd like you guys to think about what's been shared with you in terms of the survey, what's been shared with you in terms of that letter. Think about what options they might be for the rest of the year.
I have a question. Are these regularly scheduled things or are these in response to COVID?
So I, I asked, one of my, I had three questions, I didn't bring the questions, but basically it was, are you doing early releases or some sort of shortened day? How often? And did any of you make these changes? And these were, all, all the people responded basically said they have changed their calendars because they, Poland was doing it every Wednesday, they made that decision last spring, they didn't, they didn't sort of decide. My, my, Sue's our Augusta expert, Augusta made the decision last year, they didn't do it after that.
No, they, Augusta made the decision in the fall just before school started.
Okay, that's what they did, they, they passed the calendar, then they changed.
Correct.
Okay, so Augusta did.
But it is because of COVID?
Yes.
It, it's not just the way they're going to do things from now.
I can tell you that's what it is in Poland.
I believe that the intent was because of COVID, yes.
That was what Mr. Dennis asked of this superintendent shared. The, so yeah, you can see, a lot of the others that, you know, are still, I mean, RSU two has seven early releases, don't, they, at least right now are planning on doing more. RSU thirty has eight early releases, plus they have six late starts at the high school, which is sort of opposite. Most places give the additional time to their grade schools, that's what Auburn has always done. You can see Auburn does an early, early release in pre-K through five every Wednesday, but not on a show week. So for instance, next week with this, it's a four-day week with Veterans Day, they would have a full, they have Wednesday at half-days or early release. Be careful, they do not do half-days, they do early release. A half-day of course would be three and a half hours, you know, three and a half in, three and a half out, they do early release, they basically let them out. I think it's an hour and a half or two hours early. or two hours early, um, to provide time for their, for staff. Auburn is not a direct, um, directly from COVID because they've always had it as long as, my wife has worked in Auburn for thirty-plus years, they've always had early releases. Uh, so that's not a direct result. Um, SAT seventeen is a direct result of, that's Onslow Hills. Keep forgetting that nobody else knows these things. Um, RSU four is where I previously was. I started the late starts over there and I still, I'm still doing that. Um, RSU seventy-three is, is next door, it's Bruce Mountain, they have the late starts and, but it's, it's very random, so it was kind of hard to sort of figure it all out. And, but as I said earlier, they are the, the place, the only place I'm aware of that had shut down for two weeks. Uh, and I don't know if they chose to shut down or the C D C, I, I would be very surprised if the C D C shut them down because they were very clear they weren't going to do that. Uh, S C D eleven, which is Gardner, they have early release once a month. So it's kind of all over the map.
I have a question for you. If we decided to do this for any period of time, whether it's a month, a couple months for the end of the school year, whatever it is, um, would these early release or late starts count as a remote day or would it be a time where the students are not expected to do any kind of learning until they're in school? Um, as though, for instance, it was a late start because of what happened?
So, and the, that's a great question. Um, and I think the answer is, is fairly simple. Oh, I'm, I'm making an assumption basically on the way it happens in other places. It would not, it would be a full day of school. Um, and every class would be, but a shortened, so if it's a.
Shortened schedule.
Yeah, it's a shortened schedule. So they see all of their teachers, uh, in person on that day and they get whatever they're going to get for instruction and homework, um, at school and then they bring it home to them.
So if it's a delayed start, how would that impact?
Well, delayed start is the same thing. The only place that's on here is, delayed start was RSU four. No, there was somebody else.
One, two, two places, four and seven.
Yeah, um, yeah, same thing. Um, it's, it's the same thing, but in opposite. Um, it's, you see all your classes, uh, that day, just for, instead of sixty minutes, it might be forty minutes or, you know, whatever. And they see all the teachers, they go through the regular schedule.
But I mean, for, for the morning, would you expect them to be doing some kind of remote work at home or?
No.
Okay, so if it was a, an early release, we would expect them to do remote work at home, but not if it was a delayed start?
Well, it was.
No.
No, they just would do, it's like, it's like.
It would be like homework.
It'd be like homework, it'd be like whatever they, they typically do and, and yeah.
But it would count as a full day towards the number?
Yes, yeah.
As long as you have to be.
Yeah, as long as we feed them.
So we, RSU twelve's been doing this for several years. We do a, we get out an hour early every Wednesday, no matter show. Our first day of school was a Wednesday, we had early release.
Eight on the, many of them.
Yeah, um, it is amazing. I can't ima, and there was some hiccups, obviously from the community when we first started. Teachers weren't eh, a hundred percent sure about it. We get so much done on Wednesday afternoons as a staff, as a, as a middle school team. Um, it's when we do all of our committee work. I think when we first started this, we may have gotten rid of at least one workshop day because of it, because we do work after school, uh, because teachers still like, uh, uh, the day gets out at three fifteen, we still have to stay till three fifteen, even though the kids are out at, uh, one thirty at my school. So we have from one thirty until three thirty or three fifteen or whatever, some days we have to stay later per contract. But that's when we get our district work done, that's when we get our committee work done, that's when we get our R T I work done and it's scheduled. So the first Wednesday of the month is a district. The second Wednesday of the month is when your teams get together and work for our R T I. One of them I think is like a free time for teachers to be able to, if I wanted to go meet with a math teacher or something and plan a project or work in my classroom or whatever. Um, but some of them are scheduled, but, um, they all have to do with district goals or school goals. And it's been huge for us. Um, and even during the pandemic, they actually cut that back, they gave it to me two hours on Wednesdays and kids got out at like eleven thirty. Uh, but we did, we shortened our schedule, we normally have like eight-day classes and instead we have sixteen classes that day. Um, and it, it works really well.
So for us, I would say, and I don't remember who else we need to about this, I might have been Sue today, we talked about the progression of how things work. Last year we had the whole Wednesdays. Uh, I would say at the beginning was, it was such a, a needed piece that the focus really was on planning and process. Uh, and then it pretty quickly, that it didn't take very long before it sort of went, continued with planning and process, but then in sharing in terms of teachers would have a chance to work together with the grade levels and, uh, so they, they, they can become more in sync in terms of their instruction. And then as the year went on, I think as we got to spring, maybe, uh, well, I remember having this, I think it was with Sue, I remember just sit, walking around and listening to the conversations that people were having and how normal, I guess for lack of a better term, the, the conversation, it wasn't crisis planning, it was, uh, planning, planning. They had, they had the time, they could do it, they caught up, they synchronized their, um, themselves, not, not the, whatever. And then, so it just really evolved. I only share that because I think whatever you do, I think initially you need to plan on whatever time you decide to give them needs to be their time. I think we need to be really careful. Um, and I think they proved last year that's the, um, and, and I think we can expect there to be some sort of metamorphosis, but there are, and I think initially there, there's sort of a thirst for, uh, we just need, um, a chance to plan and process like we did last year. We know we, you know, it, it's been surprising. I think there are some people who would love to have the, the full Wednesday thing back. I don't think that's realistic in terms of where our community is at or whatever it starts to call it my three-legged stool, like it would only be whatever. But, um, but I think we definitely do need to recognize that, uh, for a period of time that we need to be careful what, what we, what we do with that time. So I think there's a need that they would, would do that, I'm sorry.
So I'm just listening to what Jana was saying about how first school handles this. It seems like it would probably be, if we did this, it would probably be more beneficial to do, uh, an early release than it would be to do with a late start, right?
And that is going to be my question.
Then you're gone breaking up this chunk of time, now teach all day, then go do whatever your P D stuff might need to be up to.
On the flip side of that, what would be easiest for parents? I'm just thinking that not necessarily grade school, but middle school and high school. If you have kids who are in extracurricular activities after school and you have to go pick them up and then try to bring them back an hour later, that's difficult.
I will, I mean, I, I don't, I think if I remember correctly, when I first got hired as superintendent, they had bits and study about early releases or delayed starts. Jim Hodgson personally, um, when I was in Romford, I, I, um, lobbied hard and the, the school committee, the school board to pass late starts. Um, and, and people got used to it. I, I, to me, whatever you do, I don't think, I, I could argue either way, but instead of trying to influence that decision, what I would say more than anything else is you need to be consistent. Some of these, I have some of these calendars, if you want to look at your calendars. Uh, some, some of these places will have a, with SAT fifty-two, for instance, where I live, I think they only have like eight early releases, a one month is a Tuesday, the next month it's a Thursday and, and then it's a Wednesday that, and I was like, oh my God, as a parent, and I was a parent there, it would drive me nuts. So, um, and that to me is, if you think about it, when we were doing delayed starts in RSU four, they just, parents knew that on, um, Wednesdays, school starts at this time, every other day it starts at this time. It was consistent every week. Um, and these other, Auburn, the same thing, they, they have their early releases every Wednesday, probably the same thing with you guys, Jana. The parents know, they don't think, well, is today an early release or is today not a early release? Uh, they don't, just really don't think it was what they, they planned for. And so I think it's whether you do delayed starts or early releases or anything, I think you need to think about being as consistent as possible.
Another question, last year when we did the Wednesdays, we got rid of the other early releases that were on the calendar. Is that what would happen this year when we revamp, if we wanted to do something, would we revamp the calendar and take back those scheduled early releases?
Well, I, I think that's really your call. I mean, it would make sense to do that. Um, again, for, for the same reason I just said, to be consistent. Uh, if this early release we're getting out at twelve-thirty and next early release we're getting out at one, you know, I think that's, I think you want to be as consistent as possible.
I'm just thinking, uh, for parents, I always try to think of the parents who have to transport their kids. Um, in my, like last year, I think it made it easier knowing that, I mean, there already, there's always early releases on the scope every year. So if we got rid of those ones and removed these ones, it wouldn't feel like it's such a block.
Yeah, and I think that's, um, to, to that point, and again, I'm not, I'm not making an recommendation yet, but it just, in terms of being consistent, um, the ones that are on the now essentially are referred to, I would refer to them as half-day early releases. So you go half a day. Um, and, and what I'm suggesting is happening in most other places, and Auburn went away from this probably four or five years ago before COVID, uh, to say, we're not going to give you a half a day, we're going to give you a couple hours. Um, and that seemed to be pretty palpable to, to those communities. I, what I guess all I'm going to say is whatever you decide, just be consistent about it.
I think it, it probably is, is a good idea to just make sure that we're verbalizing that when we did that survey a few years ago, uh, it was not the appetite of the town at all to have Wednesday early releases.
Uh, delayed starts.
Or delayed starts, yeah, it was not.
That's what I understood too.
Overwhelmingly, I think.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was presented very well, but that's neither here nor there. I think that ultimately whatever the results were is what people remember and I think that's where they are still.
I feel like the idea of every Wednesday early release, I think it's better for the students, better for the teachers, the teachers are more stressed, they're more stressed and better teacher, it makes a triple down effect.
And are you saying every Wednesday or every?
Every Wednesday, early, early release, not after.
Is that a question?
Yeah, well, I was just going to touch upon what we did for sports. So first of all, we have the after-school program. So some kids just go on Wednesdays. I don't know if that's available or what is available middle school-wise, uh, for, for kids here. We also have some coaches who are teachers that will have a practice starting at two o'clock or one fifteen or what, whatever, when our kids get out. And they just come in early and they'll have practice and then, you know, they're, yeah, then they go home at like three or whatever else too. Again, I guess it does impact parents because sometimes they don't get a three skill, so, you know, they don't, and there's not a bus available to bring those kids, um, home. Um, but yeah, like I said, there were some, some pushback and some, what are we going to do and how can we decide? It's, we've just known that, I mean, we, if we have, um, sometimes some of our ed techs, uh, they do have to stay too, but our principal has said, okay, um, the girls' basketball is going to be game today and the coach can't climb or whatever can an ed tech cover until the coach can get here and they allow that to happen too. So there are, you know, there are some allowances. Um, it's been very clear though too, that staff is not supposed to plan, oh, that's when I'm going to go to my doctor's clinic because I don't have to do sub twins. You know, that's, which, yeah, it's great to, to be able to do that, but we're there for a P D and we're there for, um, because we've asked for that time too. So, um, that is driven home to a place that's good. But, you know, we do have to figure some of those things out, what are we going to do for those kids that can't get rides or things like that.
Right.
So what, what it's that.
I wouldn't want kids to not be able to participate in things because they can't get a ride or that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a great point. I was kind of, that's kind of where I was going to go. And this is one of those, oh, did I only?
A comment from you?
From, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Steve Barter writes, I appreciate this, that this conversation is being had. That time can be very important. I am a former teacher, so I completely understand the grind. But didn't you all just get done saying that the best place for kids to be right now for learning is in school? And now you are entertaining the concept of reducing the amount of times, the amount of time kids are in school, especially given the fact that some students have now had to quarantine multiple times this year already. And obviously I need to get out my reading glasses. Excellent point.
I think it's a very fair point, but at, at some point there's, we need to think about.
Teachers.
Yeah, what are the other options? And that's why, I, I, I mean, like I said, there were a few people who talked about wanting to have full day Wednesdays. And I think if we, if we reduce the amount of time, we reduce the, the potential exposure and, um, you know, you're right, and, and I'm sure it feels very hypocritical, but I think it's, it's, um, I think we do need to think about the big picture and kind of what's best for, as I said before, what we did last year was really, really good and supportive of teachers. What we're doing this year is, 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 is really crushing them. And I'm going to say again, that I, I think this year is far more challenging for teachers than it was last year, far more challenging.
Kelly? I'm just thinking that before we make a decision at our next meeting, I would really love to test and talk for the teachers, whether they would think morning would be more beneficial to them or afternoon as far as a late start or early release. Uh, I just, that seems like a really big decision for us to make without any input from the people that would directly impact.
I, I feel like I can speak for the past discussion, great. Um, but I can remember there was a significant number of people who said that they didn't like early, uh, they didn't like the delayed morning staff. Um, because even though I couldn't think of it, it's all about getting the kids to school, they don't have to worry about daycare and stuff like that. It's easier after school to handle that than it is in the morning.
Good to know.
There's no, there's no reason we can't get that day, that's easy. Just ask them what they think.
Yep.
Trace, you want to help with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Caroline?
Um, do you know that the schools involve a breakfast for students on the extent? Because they assume that, because you have so much time in the morning, you have enough time to prepare for this. So if they were to do that, there'd have to be an option for students.
Yeah, we can't, we can't, um, especially with the way things are now, and you may not be aware of this, but we, we have to, to offer breakfast. And I think if we decided to do it, we probably still have to offer breakfast. I'm kidding. We, we definitely have to.
I just want to think about that, I agree.
Yeah. So I wanted to say this and I want to be careful, I don't want to offend anybody, any of you first of all, or anybody listening on Zoom, but it's, it, it just feels a little funny to me because when I was, when I went, when I first became a superintendent, I was in, um, the Romford, Mexico School District, which basically goes, and the Hanover is a part of that district, they're, they're not an actual member, but they're, whatever, doesn't matter. So let's just say goes from Mexico or Romford, way out where Romford meets up with Hanover to Byron, um, which is significant, significantly farther away, further away, um, and then a lot of rocky, windy roads. And, uh, and people would talk about exactly, and I'm not trying to diminish what you're saying, about kids not being able to get to school and, and whatever. And then, so then I went to RSU four, which certainly has its fair share of windy roads, but, but geographically comparatively, it's not even remotely close. And people would talk about, you know, the, how far, how hard it is to get to school and stuff like that. And, you know, the people figured it out. And honestly, here in Winthrop, we're a pretty small community. Geographically, we're not very big. I, I think it would be an issue. We should definitely consider it, but I'm thinking it, it, it can't be that challenging. It's not like if you lived, um, you know, the town line and barred in letter E and tried to get down to, to the school. Uh, I remember people went up there, I don't mean to point you, Kelly, although I know you're a hill person, but I remember it was in a meeting out in Litchfield at the Cary Ricker School and people out there were talking about it. And that's a windy road that goes up, you know, but I said, I drove from, I, where I live to Cary Ricker, it's thirteen miles from the town line to, uh, where the Cary Ricker School is, thirteen. Um, it's just not, that, that's the longest drive that anybody would have to make. So I, it's.
Wow, it's not.
No, it is.
No, because there are lots of offshoot roads.
I just, no, yes, but they, to go from any school, if you look at where the centralized school is, there's, there is not, um, or from the town line and leads to Litchfield is the furthest to drive anybody's going to have to make.
Let me just, uh, bring up this, this subject though, because I think it's still in this discussion. One of the things that, uh, I think would be a good time to have updated sort of finances of this school system, not so much this year, but talking about the money that we have coming in this year from the federal government, if it's all allocated, that's fine. If you don't have, that's fine. I'm still, uh, and I've expressed this to the superintendent, I, I'm still concerned about the remote burn. the remote learning, I'm just not sure that we're ever going to get away from it, I just think we have too many kids quarantined. And as the superintendent said, we had pretty good success, or maybe with our guest here tonight, that said, we had some pretty good success with the teachers that basically taught remotely last year, covered the situation. And maybe we don't have the money to back up, maybe we can't even find the teachers to do it. But the answer is, is that I think it's worse for our own teachers to try to have to cover the kids that can't do it. I know they'd like to, but I do agree that it's kind of like impossible to teach those out there and those A P A T. And I'm not, I don't think their job says, you've got to take extra time in your own heart and take, and get ready to take to teach these kids. If you can't find a way to do it internally, if we don't have any money, then we don't have any choice. But we still got a couple of those kids that can't get to school.
So I think if you look at the results of the survey, I think it was pretty clear, and when I went around and talked to them, I think they're very consistent about, they like having the kids five days, they like being responsible for the kids they're responsible for, they just, in order to do their job, and Kate's letter was, oops, I wasn't going to say her name, but the teacher's letter was really very pointed in saying, she doesn't want to just survive, she wants to, she wants to be the teacher she is, she's an amazing teacher. And so I think what they're, what's consistent in the survey and in the letter is this notion of time, give me some time and I can do this job, you know, so that's really what they're asking for.
That won't solve all your remote issues, because there's no way in an hour you can do a week's worth of work for five kids on quarantine. So I want to be very clear that if we do that, the expectation is not that now we can either offer remote learning or remote learning all of a sudden it's going to be bright-styred shining stars, but, you know, it gives you an opportunity at least to plan what's going to happen if I've got these four kids out, or how can I get caught up with everything else, because I've been covering for three teachers and I haven't had my training period all week. And now I've got my work that I need to do, and this is the time where I can do that. So I do want to be very clear that it's not the expectation that if we go to early release and late start, whatever, that remote's going to be all better, or quarantining kids is going to be all better, if it's not, that's not enough time to even touch that.
I think that, and I know just because Jolene is here, but all the administrators have been so amazingly creative, and the teachers have tuned to, and I know this is not going to be the end of the story, it's not the end of our conversation, whatever you guys decide to do, we're already looking at how to utilize people to ensure that they get some time, because if all, if, this ends up only meaning, unless you, only meaning that they have, whatever you end up with, an hour and a half, two hours every Wednesday is going to be essentially what they use, it's still going to fail. It's still about the trying to give everybody what they presently need, and then this is an acknowledgement of the additional stressors of the job, you know, so. I know Jolene has already talked about some different creative ways to possibly make sure that they have the time that they need during, you know, contractually theirs to, and, you know, I don't want to say this, I particularly don't want to say this with Teresa here, but just kidding. But, you know, I think people, you know, we've been very fortunate, particularly here in Winthrop, that people are not getting the time that they're contractually obligated to get, and they made very little noise about that, and I feel pretty blessed, I feel pretty blessed to have that happen, so.
I think that was one of my biggest concerns when we were negotiating the contract last year.
Yep.
When we were talking about how to handle that situation was, will teachers burn out in agreeing to cover our class because it's, you know, what's best to do for the students, even though it means that they then lose their own planning time or that they then can't do what needs to be done through their own classrooms. And I think that that's kind of exactly what we're seeing now, is that there's this massive burnout because everyone's covering for everyone, and everyone's running from place to place instead of being able to take a breath and say, I have 20 minutes, I can sit and I can read next week's plan and decide what I need to do, I can read tomorrow's plan and decide what I need to do. I follow a few people online, and one of them is a teacher, who said, when you have a planning time, close your door, open your window, hide, do your work. Because, you know, that's the only way we can give things time, kind of a thought, and I think that's where we are.
You know, and just to drive that point home, I mean, one of the things we tried to do, and it's other people, Megan can be one of them, Sue being another one, and I hate to do that because I'm sure I'll be people, but, you know, people have been, just say, well, do what, you know, let us come in, let us help out. I can speak for myself, I went up one day to the grade school, and I just kind of walked around, and there were, there were a couple of classrooms where the students were just reading, they were doing either time or sustained celebrating or whatever term I want to use. And so I went into one classroom and I said, why don't you just go, you know, I'll do, I'll cover your class for half an hour, and in both cases, the teachers were really reluctant. They understand that everybody, including myself, you know, were working really hard, and they're like, no, I'm, I don't need, I don't need, I don't need the break, I don't, I can do, it's like, go, just go. And I think one person was actually really offended, like I kicked her out of her class, and, you know, that's, that's what we're talking about, that's the soliency, that's there, the dedication, and we need to be mindful not to just take advantage of that. So I appreciate you sharing that.
Jolene? I just, I just want to make a comment, and I appreciate you saying how hard we're working at the grade school, but you just keep hearing like my name, and it's not me. We are a village, and we all work together. I can't tell you names because every single person is doing extra, and every single person is being flexible, and every time I look at someone else and say, I, I need you to be here this morning, and not once, and I, I can say this, like, not once has anyone looked at me and said, really, Jolene? And I don't, I don't receive that message at all. So it's not Jolene, it's, I call them the Winthrop Grade School Champions, and it is, it's that entire, it's the entire staff, they're just wonderful, so I just wanted to clarify, you're hearing my name, but it's the village, it's not me, so.
Jolene? Yes. Could you just reiterate to the Zoom audience the requirements for first and last name?
Oh, yes, anybody that is on Zoom, could you please put in your first and last name? If they can put it into the chat, I'm happy if they can change for them, or I'm going to have to have them exit the meeting. Okay, yep, I don't know if you could hear that on Zoom, but you can put your first and last name in the chat, and Zoom will put it in for you, otherwise you'll have to leave the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation.
So are we going to make, not making a decision?
I, well, I, I would.
We can talk about it next time.
What I'd like you to do is, I'd like to give you to give me some direction about what you'd like to see as a motion for the next meeting, if anything.
I would, I would, I know we're not really moving in second meeting, but I would, yeah, I would, I would, I would say the same thing. It's, well, I know that we talked about surveying the staff and sort of getting, you know, what they, what they would like, but I would like to see it either every Wednesday early release or late start, depending on sort of, I mean, with the staff survey comes back as well.
Yeah, I think if the motion were to be put on, that it would be a motion to make a decision about a delayed start or an early release.
In addition to that, would there be a, a limited time that that would happen, or are you people looking for that to happen for the rest of the year? I think we need to consider that also.
Sure.
All right, because last, last year we started, you know, until I think until the first quarter, right, and then we reevaluated it, so when would it start, when would it end, things like that?
So if I'm going to add to this, to that shaping that motion, I would, I would like to give as much time as possible to the community to whatever we decide to adjust to that, so, like I said, we already have sort of leading up to November break, and we won't meet again until the 17th, so it would seem to me that we would look to start that beginning after the holiday break.
So the June, that's kind of what I have to, I can check.
And I think we also should not have a workshop, because we have, what I'm getting at is that, similar to the situation where it comes out with Veterans Day, okay, you only get four days, and then you get a half, another half day, we're still going to think about teaching the kids what happens in school. So by then, would be, would be the, almost, would be, is that we would have a movie race, which is what I would think, on every Wednesday except those weeks where we have other things.
Well, so let me just, let me just suggest this, we put the motion the way it was suggested, and then you can, my interest as a superintendent is to put out to the public that you're going to vote on, you know, some sort of early release or delay, not delayed, whatever, a shortened Wednesday, and whatever that looks like, whether it's every Wednesday, whether it's only this or only that, I think you could, then we're at least putting out to the public that this, the school committee's been talking about this, and we're going to make this decision, and that's what we're all, I think, obligated to do.
I just want to make one more comment, to me, it would make a difference what that Wednesday would look like, if we're talking 11:30 or 1:00 versus in regards to the short weeks. Because if they're getting up one hour early every Wednesday, I'm not sure we have to cut off the short weeks, but.
Can I, yes, Teresa, would it be possible to get your responses, like, in the middle of the time between these two meetings?
Yeah, I can, I can, I think I could send this out tomorrow and then get your results next week.
Thank you.
Yeah, gives us time to think, to process.
This for my two cents worth, and Jan is actually looking at this right now, but I don't, I would not favor half-days or whatever for the early release, and I would say that it's got to be a minimum of an hour and a half, I would say more than an hour and a half or two hours. And I would be with Sue on this one, if you go two hours, I think you, well, I would kind of be with these two. To, if you're going to go with, say, a two-hour early release every Wednesday, I would not do it on a Wednesday if there was a short week. I would also suggest that you guys consider, this is just my suggestions, that you do it for the rest of the year, primarily because of what I said before. I think initially, it's almost like CPR, you know, that we're going to kind of provide some sort of relief, and then over a period of time, I think one of the things that Megan has been very quiet today, I'm very proud of her, but I think one of the things that's been a little bit frustrating is we, there is some friction, I don't know if that's the right word, but I think there's a real desire, I know Megan has a real desire to be doing, she has a plan in her head, and she's had since we hired her almost a year and a half ago, around professional development, but we really have, have sort of put that on hold because we're trying to help people survive. I would love to see us get to a point where, like I talked about before, that maybe by the time we get to the second, third quarter, certainly the fourth quarter, that we do go closer to a plan that Jan was describing in RSH12, where we can, we can be a little more purposeful about what we use, you know, some might be building-based, some might be curriculum-based, some, whatever, you know, to take a look at that. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible to sort of map that all out right now, but I think it's, I think given what we went through last year, that it's fair to assume that.
I have kind of a kids' club question, not kind of, very much a kids' club question. How much does kids' club cost families, and is there a maximum capacity for it?
Is Lonnie still on?
Lonnie's still on. Lonnie? Is there a maximum capacity, and how much does it cost families to put their kids in kids' club?
I didn't see him there.
He's not?
Hi there. Our maximum capacity is 49 right now, and it's eighteen dollars a day, and we do have some scholarshiping opportunities, but I want to tell you that staffing is becoming a real issue. Right now, I have three adult staff, I'm losing two of them on January, and so if we don't find some new staff come January, kids' club may disappear. And that's it. I interviewed Emily today, she looked very good, but I'm not sure she's going to jump on the job of interviewing again on Monday, but we're really struggling. Joanie Kokeef, who is my number one person, is the camp registrar, and once they reach the new year, she can only work two afternoons a week for me, so staffing is going to become a real big issue for us.
I have a follow-up question to that. Is the 49 student max capacity based on space or on student to staff ratio?
Our D H S license.
Thank you.
Well, Kelly, we know a little bit about that, or could find out a little bit about that. Hey, Lonnie, I noticed that you were on earlier, did you catch all the conversation about the need for kids' club to follow the school rules?
Yep.
Okay. Again, a problem?
I, 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 is there something we're not following?
Well, our understanding is that there was some concerns about kids masking and distancing properly.
Not.
Okay, they, when they're indoors, they should be.
Okay.
I have a lot of early concerns indoors, so we will bring it up when we get back to the, um, rub.
I'm glad you're on to that, because that's going to be the big, the concerns that people have brought to me, it's what I need to know in order to have my conversation with the CDC upgrade group tomorrow.
Okay.
So I don't know that we can do anything about this, and I'm just thinking about the families who might have issues with child care and that, a general lack of openings in town right now. So part of what I was wondering was, would the budget have any space or subsidies and something like that if we decide to take this early release?
I don't know.
The eighteen dollars a day, some families just, and I know Lonnie said that there is some scholarshiping available, but I don't know if there would be enough.
I'm sure we could.
Are we ready to move on?
So I have, thank you. I want to.
Could I just go back to the, I guess, maybe.
I, I can't hear very well, so I didn't catch it. Could you say her name again, please?
Catherine Clarkson, Catherine Clarkson.
Ms. Clarkson, I'm really glad you brought up the dilemma that some families are having with some kids that could get vaccinated, and then other kids that still may be too young to get vaccinated, so it really produces a problem trying to keep each other separated, which you can't do, I understand that. But I am, I'm so happy that they passed, so that we will have the opportunity, that if parents want their kids to be vaccinated from us five to 12, then, because I've been worried about all along, particularly middle school and maybe the high grade school, that we just got a situation which is not good to have, some kids getting vaccinated, some not, and interacting, et cetera, so. Let's hope that's a good news thing in terms of where we are.
The vaccine thing I got brought up earlier in the meeting for mid-November the 12th, is that for the five to 11 age group, or?
Yes, it is.
Okay, awesome, because that's the first.
I think, Ms. Clarkson, that there's a, there's already something online that you can sign up for that.
It was sent out by Jolene, so I don't know if it was sent out by the middle school too. But yeah, the online docuWare was super simple.
I have an awesome paper here, but I'm sure it hasn't been here yet.
Okay, thank you.
I'll undertake a motion to approve policy J. Al, school wellness for second reading.
Some of.
Second, in a seconded discussion. Everything's the same, right? Megan?
No changes.
No, there are no modifications from the last time.
Any other concerns, or I know we've talked about it before. Be ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor? Vote passage units. Budget, development. Budget, development, calendar, 2022, 2023.
So this is really just informational. Happy to answer your questions. You might have, essentially, this is the same calendar. To be honest with you, it's what Dr. Brown put out years ago and we just, we just continue to follow it. It should have been in your, in your packet. I know the administrative team the other day, they're getting me all that information around, I think that's on the number three. And then we will go through the process. What's a little bit up in the air still is the end, but we don't need to worry about that for a while. But the process is essentially to collect information by the building level and then they submit it to the central office. We put together the expenditure side of the budget and then we will parent, we will match that up with the revenue side. I don't, I don't know if you want to give me guidance as a school committee about where you want us to go. I think it's, this could be another one of these hard to read years because we, we, the governor passed, which 55% was passed after the budget was approved. So we can, just because of knowing it's going to be 55%, we know we're going to get more money next year. If we don't, I will be, I don't have any idea how that could possibly happen. We, after the budget was approved and the revenues were all approved, we, we're going to have 407,000 extra dollars this year. We can't spend that because we, we are, you know, we are controlled by what the voters approve. So we'll, we'll have to talk a little bit as soon as the auction is finished about what to do with that. I have some plans. That's a different, that's a different conversation. But I would say that you can anticipate that, that additional 407,000 dollars at least will be added to the revenue for next year. So we can anticipate we're going to get a pretty good chunk of money. I anticipate we're going to get a little bit more because we have, God, I can't remember. I probably had, gave it to you guys last month. I think we have about 47 more students. And that's not, it's, it's not a perfect one-to-one, but as I've always said to you a number of times, that the two biggest drivers of revenue within 279 is student count and valuation. Well, our valuation hasn't changed much in the year. It doesn't really, and honestly, even if it did, you do a two-year average to try, try to mitigate the variance. So our, our valuation shouldn't change by much and our population is going up. Now, just so you know, the other thing that factors into that is they re-slice the pie, so to speak, every single year. So let's just say hypothetically that Portland grows by 5,000 students. You know, they're going to get that much, they're going to, they're going to, this is going to go up a lot and ours might not go up as much as we thought because they will, they will reapportion that based upon everybody's student population, everybody's valuation. So, but I'm anticipating we're going to get a sizable chunk of money and we have to figure out how best to do it, come best use of it.
Kelly, try just looking at this. On December 17th, it says staff supply requests into administrators. Does that mean that after that date, they can't make new requests?
No, so, no, that's a great question though. The, so I, I don't want to minimize this process, but the administrators have all heard from this from me. So you guys need to, we, we need to go through a process of planning and identifying an amount of money and justify it so that the voters will support it. I think it would be misleading for me to tell you guys that whatever they put in on December 17th, whether it's everything or not everything, is the end of the story. It can't be. When we're, we're asking people to put into the budget amounts or things they think they want at least seven months in advance of when they're going to spend it. That just does, I mean, it's more like nine months. It just almost never works out that way. So the process is a systemic, systemic process to give us, to get us a number to justify asking the voters for a certain dollar amount. Once you approve it, once the townhouse approves it, once the public approves it, we spend it any way we want. So it really is about, you know, the administrative saying to them, tell us what you know you need for supplies. And it's almost never, but let's just say, just to round numbers, say they need $10,000 worth of supplies. And so most administrators, I know when I was a building level administrator, I knew that I could justify $10,000 if I might ask for 12. You know, some, it's not going to be crazy, but it's going to be enough to make sure I don't short myself.
So this is like a sign?
It is, it is. Well, the only reason that day is there, if you look at the calendar, is because what is just happening is, and who knows what the administrators will do, but I know when I was a building level administrator, I basically took the break, took home the request from the staff and then I shaped it. And then you can see that January 7th, which is right after that break, the budget's due to me.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty. Discussion about winter sports protocol.
Uh, no, no, snow day protocol.
Oh, sorry. I can't put my glasses on. So no day protocol.
So there's really nothing new to add to this. I just want to, I think I, I mentioned this at least to Janice and to Sue in our pre-committee meeting. I just want to make you all aware that it, it's possible that even though we're saying our snow days are going to be remote days, it may be circumstantial that they may have to be a snow day, it may have to be a snow day. And if we do a typical old-fashioned snow day type of thing, that gets added to the end of the year. It, it may be this year because of how crazy COVID is that the commissioner or the governor or somebody might say, don't add new days in, but typically the, the state boss says you go to school until you're in school 175 days. So I'm just putting that up there. The reason it even came up, you said, well, what's different now? Is initially there was some concern that was raised by the, the food nutrition program about what, what kind of this meal and what we're allowed to keep on stock or in stock for our, for our meals. And it's, it's kind of limited and, and you may, you probably already have heard, if you have not, just tell you again, that we, we've had a lot of issues and schools have had a lot of issues, I think I mentioned this to Janice, with deliveries. So we might look at the weather and say, it looks like there's a good chance of a snow day on Thursday. And so we start to sort of prep for that. And back when we could get deliveries on a regular basis, we can sort of anticipate that and order stuff. But now there's more restrictions on what is a, the milk dates, that's what this word for.
Shelf stable. Shelf stable.
Shelf stable, there you go. Awesome. So there's just, there's, there's other regulations that have come out. So it makes Aaron a little bit concerned about being able to fulfill our responsibility. And it's really this simple. If we can't feed them, it can't count as a day. So that's really the big factor.
So when, when will you know if we can have them remote or not?
Oh, we know we can, but we have to meet those requirements. So our, my, my intent is to try and do that. And as I said, even if it's a snow, snow day, we say it's remote, you know, we have to think about two things. Whether, I mean, if, if there's a widespread power outage, you know, is there a plan to do that? And then the other thing is, I've said and would continue to say that, and it goes back to the geography. If we know there's going to be a snow day, we anticipate and we don't, we're not able to distribute those meals, I'm, I'm happy to drive them around and deliver meals to, you know, to families here. And when, and Janice said she would do it too, even when she's off the board. Sorry.
No, that's, I mean, if I'm.
So basically you're going to have to play each storm by year.
Right, so, so here's an easy one. Last year we had two snow days. I actually was able to call them. One was two days in advance and the other one was the day before. So those are simple. So we are able to, to, to prepare the meals, send them home. That's what started this whole thing. That's going to be still the hope as long as we have stock. If we don't have stock, we can't do it.
So will your messaging on those days be today is a remote learning day or today is a non-remote snow day?
Right.
Okay.
That's it, that's it. It's, it's really all that part of it. I just wanted to sort of, it's, it could be happening any day now. It's 20 whatever degrees.
It's not going to happen before the weekend, huh?
All right, now we can have the discussion of winter sports protocol.
I will say that I don't have, I don't have this to pass up to all of you. But this was, our meeting with the Kennebec Valley Superintendents is an hour long. This was probably 55 minutes of that hour today. This was after I spent probably a good two hours. I sent, did I send it up to you guys? No, did I send up the thing from the M B C?
Nope.
That's what I meant to do. But that's still, it's still a, a draft. You know, I didn't on purpose. We talked about it. The, we're just trying to, initially superintendents were trying to push the D O E and particularly the M P A to provide some guidelines for schools to consider. And in the base, best case scenario, the, all of the schools in the entire state would all adopt the same rules. That's not going to happen. So it started in southern Maine, then went through the mid-coast section, the, the athletic directors. And then the superintendents started meeting by the region groups. There's, there's nine regional groups in the state of Maine. So we said, maybe if we can get the regional groups to establish some protocol for their boards to adopt, then we can have some consistency. What happened here, what I have here, and it's a smaller, so I didn't have this made for everybody, is that they looked at, it's called the Winter Season Matrix of the COVID Mitigation Expectations by Superintendent Region. Then what's, what's also in here is, is a couple of, we didn't do it by our superintendent region, or actually we did today. But I initially got involved with our league, which is Joel is the president for the Mountain Valley Conference. So we had all the Mountain Valley Conference superintendents get together and we were actually able to come up with protocol that we cut off the region. I will tell you that I didn't like all of them, but I liked the idea that we were going to be consistent. I liked the idea. Well, let me go to the worst extreme. One of the things that was floated out there as a possibility today is just let the home teams decide. If they, and it is this extreme. There's a school nearby us that basically would choose to have no protocol. That any, any number of fans from home or away could attend, coaches, players, nobody had to mask. They could just, it's just like, just like normal. Then we have another school in the M B C very, very close to us that would, would not allow any fans from home or away. All of the players participating have to mask. All the officials, all, everybody who was in the gym would have to mask. So that's obviously as extreme as, that was within the Mountain Valley Conference, projected over the entire state. And projected over all the sports because as, as much as some people might believe, Joe Petrowski and I think hockey is the most of the, no. I know Joe does. But, but there's, you know, there's things like wrestling, you know, we don't have wrestling, but wrestling is huge in the M B C. And so it, it looks different for wrestlers. The medical information we got with respect to wrestlers is different than, say, with basketball players or hockey players. There's a lot, there's a lot to this. So I don't have any, I wish I, I was really hoping by this time that we would have come together. But what this matrix is here, and I will send you the link, I mean, I'll send you this email so you can all see it. It looks a lot better on my screen than it does in paper. But it just looks at some of the things they're talking about. Should we require all of our athletes to be vaccinated or in a pool? Should we recover face covering for spectators, face covering for officials, judges during? But all, all of the sort of things. One of the things that we had agreed to, and, and I was okay with this, is that home games would only be, we'd only allow fans from the home team to attend home games. So if we were, if we were playing at Hall Vale, for instance, we, we could send no fans there. Except we then agreed that we would allow a crew of up to three to go broadcasting. So we could, we could do what we did last year. That was agreed to by the Mountain Valley Conference superintendents, but not by, not by the state people, people in the state. So I guess my bad news for me is I was really hoping I'd have more of a plan for you guys to think about and discuss. And then we, we need to vote on, on something. Janice pointed out something that, that Joel is talking to me about. You know, we have the, what's it called?
Tip-off tournament.
Which is a fundraiser. And so that's not governed by any of us. So that's been.
Do you know how that protocol working against state games where there's no technical holdout?
So that was, that's a great question and that, that was what drove the conversation today.
Can you repeat that question?
She asked if we do what the, you know, with respect to state games and stuff, like, to do home tournaments and stuff, right? Yeah. So that is, that is a far more complicated question than you might think. But that's when we asked the M P A, the Main Rivers Association to weigh in on, to do what we would refer to, we all talk about as a planning backwards model. So their tournaments, whether it's hockey or basketball or wrestling, are all invitational tournaments. So that's their tournament. So we said, tell us what the expectation is going to be for the end of the year tournaments and that would give us some guidance. That would be the guidance we're looking for. And then each board can sort of vote on it. And they are, they're not, they're not willing to do that. So, but they haven't yet. But then to further complicate that, this is on the matrix, but a lot of the venues that we use are connected, for instance, hockey. They, they're connected with, with the university. We've got civic centers connected with the university that's part of the University of Maine system. And the University of Maine says, everybody who participates, including spectators, has to be vaccinated. That's a U Maine rule. We can't, we're using a facility, we can't tell them we're not, we're not following that rule. Same thing in the Commonwealth Civic Center. That is, that's a, it's not a university, but it's, you know, they, they have the same, they have rules. So we have to then think about what the rules are for the venues we want to use. So.
I have a question. So nothing's been determined yet. When is, when did the winter sports start and is this going to affect the start?
I, I, I don't know the answer to either of those questions because I think we've given Instagramming hard to try to get some read upon protocol. But you guys, you have to act on it. So I was really hoping you'd, and I probably still will, I was, I'd like it better, like the conversation we had earlier, where you guys had some conversation, give me some feedback and, and then we can put together something to put on the future agenda. I don't think we're going to be able to do that here. I think we hope that.
Question or comment?
No, Joel has.
Joel just indicated that middle school starts next week. High school is 11/22. So I guess my next question is what happens if there's nothing resolved between now and then? What, what are our coaches supposed to do?
Well, we can keep practicing. I mean, Joel, do you want to, do you want to unmute and weigh in?
Uh, and, and tell anything, so the M P A's recommendation is to follow whatever the CDC puts out there. The reason they can't determine anything is because of what Jim just alluded to. Not only is the super kex groups all over the place philosophically, but all of the venues that we use are, are getting, we're not just going to be dealing with this turn of time. We will have situations where we will be playing hockey in arenas that some of our athletes will not be able to participate in. Until further notice, our coaches have been instructed by myself to fully mask because that is the worst case scenario to best case scenario, hopefully it vacuums off. Furthermore though, that's what we do all day in P E class. So I, I'm not willing to put the coaches out there and take a risk and say, do whatever you want to do because we don't have regulations. We're going, we're going to keep things regulated as much as possible to keep our kids safe, number one. And number two, to make sure that we're following what the guidelines are from the CDC, which is currently masked indoors.
And that is, just to add, that was the overall, even though we didn't have consensus, that was the overall opinion of superintendents on the Zoom meeting today because essentially something you just said, Joel, which is during, during the day, we, we ask our kids to, to mask virtually 100% of the time, virtually. And including phys ed class, that's what they kept bringing up. So we, why would we, until we have guidance, why do we have to stick with the rules we already have in place? Now, you just also need to know that there are schools that do not require that.
Right now, the athletic directors have chosen amongst the M B C to follow the recommendations that Jim and the Mountain Valley Conference superintendents have put forward just because we think it's consistent with everything. Not only as a group, but. Just because we think it's consistent with everything, not only as a group, but if you look at the recommendations from the NPA, the latest ones are from last year, so we feel that we're following the most recent recommendation. Even that it's a year old, the recommendation is to mask indoors. And currently there's, you know, there's, the fan thing is a fiasco right now. The, the big issue is, for example, volleyball just had their state championship, they sold out of tickets. People played the game of eating a two and a half hour bag of popcorn so they didn't have the mask. It turned into the mask police. It's just, it's not manageable if you have fans masked. And I, I don't know that it's in the best interest of our community with spread right now to unmask those fans. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is, that's not a political statement by me. That's just simply what I've been fed from, I was, I was part of the advisory committee on Tuesday at the NPA level, which is basically the committee that has conversations around these things, and there really is no answer. It is going to be a local decision, you will have to make that decision as a group.
Kelly?
One, two questions. So the first is, are these student athletes required to provide their own masks? Or do the schools provide masks for them?
We purchased five under masks last year that are designed just for athletic competition with esophony.
Perfect. And the other question is, do we have funding to do something like we did last year where we livestream the sports to people at home?
We actually, we were ahead of, we were ahead of COVID, to be honest with you. We, we just fell into a good deal and we already had it set up. So all of our competition is at the high school level streamed. And we would just have folks, as Jim alluded to, there's two or three folks that you can have in the gym that are considered game personnel to stream for everybody else. So I would say the answer is resoundly yes, that we are, you know, we, whether COVID's going on or not, we would certainly anticipate to continue to stream anyways. But we will continue to do that this year, especially if fans are limited.
Hey, how can you make that work for middle school athletes and sports as well?
What we did last year was we just used the, we streamed the Facebook Live. That was part of the reason of lifting Facebook from the middle school block. And then we just put it on our website, so it was easy access for home and away games. And then to even, I guess, make the situation safer, we had somebody that was a school employee duly, that was part of the pool already with the kids to do the filming for us.
Joel, do you know when the first games are?
Well, the tip-off tournament would be the first ones for the, for the high school. But again, that's not something that we're regulating, that's a group that's renting. So that's up to them, how they wanna handle it as well as do with the spread of it, if it does happen. But the high school would be December tenth. But the middle school, and just to go on record, I voted against this. The middle school is starting next week with tryouts. And then they start games the third week of November, I just don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was like the eighteenth, which I'm gonna have to reschedule all that, all those games because we will still have sports going on. And there's a huge two-week, two-week, two-week gap, excuse me, between Christmas vacation and so forth. That will probably plug those in too, but then it affects other things, but anyways, different conversation.
So wait, wait, hold on. The middle school sports are actually, you're gonna actually reschedule the ones that are starting?
Yeah, we have to, we have to because we have kids still participating in sports. But we start tryouts for the folks that are not continuing in the fall season right now, next week. But the first, the first game is that third week of November.
Before the games start.
I got a question, what do you have?
I'm just wondering with last year, they did not have anyone announcing at the basketball game. Is that going to happen this year? At least at the high school level?
I think that we'll be able to do something different, and I'm not sure what that's gonna look like. That really depends on what you guys decide for fans. We don't have anybody as a commentator per se, if we have fans in the gym. Because we'll just continue to run it like we do now, we'll just have an announcer, announcer that, you know, kind of like what you heard Mr. All that do.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
And that fee will still be there. If there aren't fans, then we can certainly look at a commentator, but that's a whole different ball of wax. Not, not that we're against looking at it, but I just, I'm not gonna start to invest money, time in recruiting somebody to do that until I know what way we're going.
So Joel, is it possible though, if we do, if we're not allowed to have visitors, take our people to visiting location that we might, if we have a three or, a three or four person crew, that one of them might provide some commentary?
We could, we could, we could definitely provide something at home, but I cannot guarantee what the system is at the visitors.
Okay. I think it was gonna be our call.
FHS because they, they didn't have this system in place. So as you can imagine, like everything else, it's on backorder. So you're gonna have Facebook Live, you may just be looking at a screen. That's, that's gonna be as good as it gets.
Yep.
So it seems like either our next meeting or the meeting after that, we're gonna have to make a decision about at least the fans and such, if the games are starting.
Yes.
Joe?
You kind of got to a little bit, Joel, when you're talking about the tip-off tournament. It's a different group and everything, but wait. One of the things that has been brought to people's attention is the fact that we have a lot of other youth teams running around filled with our players and players from anywhere else, using our facilities, which I don't, I don't object to that. But I do think the question is, shouldn't they be following the same rules that, that that facility has for its own players playing there?
I think that's a very great.
That's a decision of the group. I'm, I'm not going to tell another group that they have to enforce a certain set of rules, just like Jim alluded to with, with the group concept of the superintendents, as well as the meeting. You can't play the game on, we enforce this rule here because we're in this building, we enforce it there. You need to make a decision as a group saying that your kids are gonna follow this or not. If that becomes a prerequisite, Joel, if you want them to follow those rules in our buildings, then you need to make a decision as a board that says you have to follow our rules if you use these things. But I certainly don't have the right to go to Lonnie and say, you have to follow our rules. I'm sure you would if we asked him to, but I'm just saying, as far as a tip-off tournament that makes money off people coming through that door, they're probably gonna find a different gym if I tell them that they can't allow anybody to have home fans. So it's like my life, there's no clear answer on this. You know, it's, I can't, I can't really tell you, I can only tell you that I'm gonna follow what you decide to do. I can't tell you which way to go with that because that's, that's, it's what you guys think is safest for our kids in our buildings. And that's a whole different philosophical discussion that I, I could lead any way you want me to.
Well, I, I, I at least attended the university hockey game and I did my thing. I showed them my vaccination and I wore my mask. People did a very good job and it wasn't all eating popcorn and not wearing the mask.
Yeah, what you're dealing with now, Joel, is that you're inside, that changes everything. It's just looked at and, and how you have to know about it by regulations. It's, it's just a different setup now, and if we were playing basketball and hockey outside, we'd be fine. But that's, that's the issue you're dealing with. And I guess what I wasn't clear about earlier is, to answer your question more directly, is what Jim was talking about earlier with hockey, which I know you're a passionate person about. If we go play somewhere at a university, it's different than if we play at the Ice Falls. And those groups have made a decision that their policy will be followed there. We have not done that here, so that's, that's the question that needs to be answered.
So it sounds like because we don't have more information, I'm gonna have to. To me, it's not that I need to wordsmith the motion that accurately right now, but again, I think we need, we will need, there will have to be something on the November seventeenth agenda to vote on some protocol. We, we don't have to say exactly what it's gonna be, to the extent that, you know, I can do that. And the other one, we had good conversations, so I have a good idea how to shape that one. This one's gonna be broader, but I think people need to know that our intent is to establish a protocol for winter sports.
The problem is that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, I just, our obligation, my feeling is our, our ethical obligation to the community is to let them know we're taking action on this. And whether we change the motion or we don't change the motion.
Mr. Harts, continue, I was suggesting to you that you would broaden that also and put it past sports because you also have a pile of people lining up outside our door wanting to use the PAC.
Yep.
And I am getting calls every day of what we're going to allow spectators, fans, and groups to do in there. I, I am very much in support of what you are, Mr. Harts, you and I discussed at length today, that if a group runs, rents our buildings, that is up to them what they want to. Because if you're asking me to enforce a policy with another group, that's just not gonna happen. Not because I'm saying no, but I'm just saying that I just, it's, it's gonna turn into a bigger fight. So I do think that the umbrella is much bigger than sports. It, it has to do with your rentals, it also has to do with even some of our kids sitting there being part of groups with drama. You need to make a decision on how you're gonna allow those folks on the stage to perform, how the people are gonna be. I mean, this is, this is nothing that is, is, should be taken very lightly. Because it will be something that you cannot do once you do it.
So I think once we, whatever we come up with, we need to think about renting our, the PAC and that. We need to, one of the things that, unless the CDC changes their stance, those types, and I'm with you. I think we talk about the record, we can insist that they follow our school rules. I think to the extent possible, we're gonna ask groups to follow our rules. But the real question is about how do we make that happen? So I'm with you on that, but I think we need to make sure in our permission slips or our, whatever we put together, that they understand that that, that any spread that happens as a result of that is gonna be considered community spread. And so anybody who participates in that, if they have to be caught up in this net that we're dealing with right now, that it's community spread and those people have to quarantine regardless of their status, they need, they need to know that before they say they're gonna use the book.
Jim, Mr. Lonnie, Steve's. I can tell you that one of the reasons I committed tonight is basically because I was looking for information about this subject. Because I will tell you, I'm like, I'm committed right now that the Winter High MCA, youth basketball programs this winter are going to follow to the, to the letter whatever you guys decide as a school. All of our stuff that we have put out right now has said, we don't know what the rules are right now, but when we do know the rules, we'll let you know. And so if we are told that everybody wears a mask, then everybody will wear a mask. If the players on the floor don't have to, if whatever, whatever rules and regulations you put forward, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna go by. So I'll tell you that you're not gonna have to worry about us and, and enforcing different set of regulations without. So I'm committed to whatever you guys come up with.
Awesome, thank you, Lonnie.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Lots else.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to elect Melissa Burgess as Winter High School Life Skills Teacher. Second, in seconded discussion.
Sue Watson.
So just a little background on Melissa. Melissa holds a master's degree in special education from the University of Kansas. She has worked as a special education teacher since 2014. Prior to that, she was an educational technician for eight years. This is all local in Maine. Melissa brings a strength in post-secondary transition planning. She believes that the ability to learn is in every student and that her role as the teacher is to find out how an individual student learns and provides a program that is fitting to their needs. She wants to look for ways to support students to become as functional and independent within their own community. We are so very excited to have Melissa join our team, and we look forward to building on the success of our current program.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously, and welcome Melissa. But what comments? Anything from the Zoom? Any from in person? All right, school committee comments, Janine?
Congratulations to Haley Williams, who just broke the girls cross-country nineteen ninety-three record from Amber Brochus. And she is headed to New England's, which I'm assuming that's the name of the competition, in Vermont on eleven thirteen, so good luck to her. And congratulations to the cross-country teams for the end of their season as well as soccer. Madeline Wagner also broke a school record for assists in one season, and she is only a freshman, so that's pretty impressive, field hockey. And congratulations to the Class C South Regional Championship girls' field hockey team. They play Coney, at Coney, excuse me, two o'clock on Saturday.
Oh, we're gonna change that time.
We are, yeah. There's also, I believe, a middle school football game that is at three on Saturday, I think.
Middle school game?
I thought the middle school champ, one of the middle school championships was coming up this weekend. And then our football team is in the championship starting on Saturday night, so good luck to all those teams. Thank you again to our town, specifically the police, fire, and ambulance crew that welcomed our girls in late last night. And thank you to the members of Main Street that live on Main Street for the little bit of excessive noise that they heard coming down through town. Thank you to the staff that filled out the survey. As a teacher, I can so relate to a lot of your issues, so I appreciate hearing directly from you. And also thank you to everyone who put on a trunk of treat. A lot of community members were involved with that, and it was packed, and it, it just, it looked amazing. And I think that's it. Oh, also to the boosters. I happened to drive up to the high school to get, drop off, do something. And it happened to be the day of the field hockey game, and they have all these signs and the really tall game day things. And it just, it's really cool when, when teams sort of arrive at school and see that. So thank you for the boosters for putting that together, Jay.
Timothy?
Just two things. One, just glad, thank you for the teacher that wrote us the email about Strauss and like, asking any teacher, please keep vocalizing that, letting us know your thoughts, if you don't know.
Yeah.
Second, kind of feedback what you said, it was interesting because I was there when Amber did that record in nineteen ninety-three.
Oh, cool.
And I was there on Saturday, we should go to the.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, of course, I'm gonna be able to tell them. So that was fun.
That's funny. Kelly?
I don't, I don't really have anything to say. Thank you for the good conversation again today. And we leave with a lot to think about before our next meeting. And I hope that we get some good feedback from the community about where they would hope that we would go so that we can put that in our, in our discussion in the next meeting.
Such a good point. Joel?
Couple of quick questions. Football game is at Saturday night this week?
Saturday at seven home.
Seven home at dawn. And the field hockey championship game is two P M. at Coney High School?
Yeah.
And you can't change that?
No, and they're playing MCI, I believe.
Yes, they are playing MCI, Big Bill or Foster Park.
Yeah.
After watching all girls, ladies, young ladies, the other night, I just watched last night. I'm still on freezing. Actually, it was that cold, but.
You're kidding me.
That was because they gave me those hand warmers, leg warmers, foot warmers and stuff like that. But that was a great game and a great, I call it professionalism, but just the way that the young ladies ended that game. So proud to watch it, can't wait for us to build a field just like they do. That was fantastic. And I am, like you are, really pleased with Haley's achievement, that's just great. Now, I just want to ask, Tim, were you involved with that evening running thing where anybody could run or do everything? I've heard from more parents just telling me, and I'm like, these kids are high school, these kids are three-year-old, I guess, like. I just like them.
Yeah, we actually, we had our, our rec team, we had the girls, second, third, and fourth graders.
Okay.
Compete against middle schools, ECA, ECA middle schools.
That's awesome.
Emerson, Ome.
It's incredible.
That is nice to have family in there.
It's totally a family guy discussion.
It's good for you.
I, I mean, it must have been, I mean, I just, like I said, I just heard from people just saying the praise that they said, one of the best things that we've ever done is tell the individuals, just get the kids moving.
Yep.
So I know it's getting late and I shouldn't, shouldn't be telling stories, but I just have to tell. My very first year teaching, a bazillion years ago, I was in a portable classroom, and I had this kid who was in eighth grade who was, who was very, very, very hyper, and the outgoing teacher said to me, kids, him was Derek, I don't think I'm giving anything away, he said, when Derek gets really wound up, then, remember I was in a portable classroom, send him outside and make him run around the trailer for 15 minutes, and, you know, whatever, at least 15 minutes. And I said, well, his parents think, I said, oh, the parents love it. They think it's great. They know it really works for them. He won the, the cross country state championship, his senior year at high school.
All that training.
All that training.
Well, obviously, Coach Baron Castle was trying to make sure that he has a team in two years as a, like, little team.
They've got a competition in about six years.
He's, he's got a big group of young people coming up.
Well, you're old life, you mean.
Their names are all Baron Castle.
My eight-year-old, Keener Fifth, and my niece. It's watching them.
Jenna, did you need to add something?
Yeah, I just also wanted to add that our superintendent has been singing the National Anthem, and I didn't know that, and all of a sudden, I'm listening, and I'm really listening, and I'm like, wait a minute, that sound, that voice sounds very familiar. So he did it at Coney, did you do it at Coney down in Freeport? You've done it a couple of times.
He did it at Thomas.
Thomas. So it was just really nice to have that presentation from, from superintendent, too.
That won't leave the minutes.
Well, then I may amend it when we vote on that.
I thought it was G. Hartz saying it, too.
Girls, before I get to you, there's somebody from, so Joel was a slow typer.
Yeah, Timothy apologizes, but he would like to publicly thank all parties that assisted in covering for me, me and Joel, not me. During his absence, specifically Mark Campbell, Jim Hodgson, Jeff Herkins, Bruce Brooks, Lonnie Steves, George Moore, John Baer, Troy Tucker, Joe Verdam, Colleen Sousa, Aya Simmons, Jess, Jess Holson, Denise Mitchell, Kristen Barnes, and many, many more. Couldn't have kept things running without you guys. And Lonnie also shared that the neighbors on Main Street were shocked.
Okay, now.
I just have one more question.
Okay, Joel.
I'll win the debate.
Do, do we use, or do we have available in our schools, not yet?
I'm trying to think where I saw this. Some system, I think it was Auburn, just voted, oh, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
No, currently we don't, and we won't unless you guys vote to do that.
Well, I, that's...
Give me another controversial issue.
That's, that's maybe a subject for future, but I just...
Yeah, like five years from now.
It just looks like that's coming into the, to the future. Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Amalie?
Mr. Sett and the student council are, have been working hard this week to send out over 500 letters for the A-1 program, so people will be getting those in the next couple of days, so if you want to apply.
Mark, Tom, and you.
Yeah, if you want to apply to that, check your mail in the next couple of days. That's all I have for today, but...
I also want to have one thing. As NHS Vice President, I'd like to invite all community members to our induction ceremony on November 9th at 7:00.
And is that in person or via Zoom?
Um, in person, yeah. We're just shaking our heads.
And that's at the PAC?
Yes.
11:09 next week.
Yes.
Any more time again?
7:00.
PAC.
Inducting quite a few new members.
Great.
Mask?
Julie?
Mask required.
I did, I did want to mention one thing, because I had sent to Mr. Campbell about receiving emails so that I could send a thank you that way, but I just thought of it now. I was like, oh, say it now. So the National Honor Society at the high school sent out appreciation cards to the administration with a Hershey bar, and I just thought that was the sweetest thing. I, I, it must have come in inter-office, I'm not sure, it was on my table, and I thought, what, how sweet is that for those kids to send out a thank you card and a little, you know, chocolate bar? It's like, it just was very much appreciated, and I wanted to say thank you to them, not knowing all the members, though, so I, I figured if I say it now, they'll hear me, and it will be also that the public will know that they've done a really nice gesture, so...
Awesome. Thank you, Ash.
The last time that you spoke, you mentioned a presentation, have you any thoughts? Do we have any idea when that might happen?
Last year it was like the end of the year.
Okay.
You have to do it.
Yeah, it was near the end of the school year.
Great.
Yeah.
March, early or so.
March, yes, early, yes, too.
But it'd be good, we only got to do three or four last year, right? Be nice if we could do more.
Yeah, because they were really cool.
They were. They were inspiring.
Yeah, they were.
I'm very excited about mine.
You already know what you're going to do?
Yes.
Do you want to tell us?
Um, I'm, but we have a cloud nine in the past where all of our costumes and props are, and it's, it's, for lack of a better word, it's a mess. So for my project, I'm organizing it, making some sort of inventory of what we do and don't have, and I'm working with Mr. DeScolius with, with the project to just come up with some sort of system that makes it easier and a better space to use.
Okay, I, I'm not going to add anything because I think you guys have covered everything. So if there is no objection, I can adjourn this meeting at 8:35. Thank you, everybody.